All right, it is five o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and begin our special session. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We will begin with a continued discussion regarding the lease and/or sale of property located at 101, 112, 113, 115, 116, and 118 West Gray Street. Ms. Walker?
Good evening. Okay, so we came, I think we talked about this on November 2nd, and kinda got some ideas from council. The feedback I was understanding from that meeting were preference for either a long-term lease or a sale of the property with some reversionary right and or right of first refusal. As I said last time, we had a lot of details to be worked out with Factory Obscura folks who are here tonight, and so in a minute I'll turn it over to them. But they have been working closely with their founders group to look at the different options that are good for them. And as I said last time, for us it'll be all about the numbers, right? So what does that price point look like? What's the benefit? What kind of jobs are being created? Those kind of things. And so with that, I wanna turn it over to your friends at Factory Obscura if you all wanna introduce yourselves, and then you wanna come on up?
My name's Laurel Massana, co-founder of Factory Obscura.
Hi, I'm Laura Phillips, one of the co-founders of Factory Obscura.
I'm Kelsey Carper, I'm also one of the co-founders.
So you might wanna, you might provide an update on where you all are at in your work?
Yes, so we are continuing to meet with potential investors. Our company is a for-profit company that will engage artists collaboratively to build an immersive art installation. We are projecting to bring in in a half million tourists or visitors per year. And our performance shows that in the year three to five of operation, we'll be employing 70 employees, and probably more. That's our low estimate, but to, that includes artists and other professionals. Are they, what do we call it, fighting wage label, more likely well over 50,000, maybe on average. This is the short version of it. I don't know how much detail we wanna get into today.
So as we spoke earlier today, we were emailing, and I told them council's feedback from the last meeting, and that's the direction we're going to head in. I think they're on the same page as we are as far as lease, long-term lease or purchase, continuing to work with their investors to determine what that path looks like. But we'll be looking at performance standards based on some of these projections as well.
Question for Laurel. The State Department of Commerce identifies jobs as quality jobs at $17 an hour plus benefits. If that is kind of the range or better we're looking at, then that's an aspect of Factory Obscura we will pursue through the state to potentially provide some payroll incentives to Factory Obscura to create those types of quality jobs here in Norman. So I'll make a note that these will qualify as quality jobs according to that definition. Thank you.
Our current location on 9th Street, our, the lowest pay raise that we have is 70.
So yeah, so we're already there. So what's the timeline on this decision?
So the timeline is going to depend on when we can raise the funds. From the time we raise funds, we anticipate two and a half years for the completion of the first phase, and then another year for the completion of the second phase. We will, during construction and design, we intend to insert or release some elements that will spur a little bit of interest and some energy in the building. We follow the model that we adopted after our location instead, where we were able to open small portions of the buildings and make it attractive, create some community-based event, and really start engaging the whole city and the surrounding for participation.
To share with council some information on the status of the building on Gray, currently housing our building maintenance operation, it's got some building maintenance parts, inventory, and then some long-term storage. We have an option to move that operation into similar space, just new construction that's currently underway, much closer to North Base where our other operations of, you know, similar use currently take place. That space could be available to us as early as March. Just wanted to put that timetable out there to make sure that would fit into the timetable you think you guys are preparing for. Excellent.
Do you have a preference for long-term lease or purchase?
Currently, we lean for the purchase option, but I think it will largely depend on the majority, the main investor. We anticipate that a group of investors will have a lot of say on which direction that makes sense financially for them. So the final answer, we'll hope to know the final answer in a few months. Both options are on the table. I think we should pick, depending on the scenario, continue to work through that.
Excellent.
Do we have a timeline on those negotiations?
Those are hard to... Yeah, I wish I could tell you with certainty that we have a meeting slated with a large group of very interested investors in less than a month. And so that will be a determining, telling point. And from there, we'll be able to give you a better timeline.
Okay. So I don't think we're trying to sell this to anyone else, but I don't wanna drag it on forever. So we'd all like to know what's going on.
No, we don't either.
Councilor Hall?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. I've gotten, you know, some feedback from constituents in Ward 4, and of course, this would be in heart and soul Norman in Ward 4. And we began this conversation, I think I first met you all last March, and so it's been a running conversation, and we do have a lot of new council members on board now. So there are a couple of things that I just wanted to pursue on the whole aspect of, that I think was really intriguing to us at the beginning, of paying a thriving wage. So how do you define what a thriving wage is for the arts community?
So we actually have that lined out specifically, if I say this correctly. We currently have thriving wage defined as hourly jobs starting between $15 and $17 an hour.
Okay.
Hour, kind of full-time salary positions. The range is, I believe, $50,000 to $125,000 or so. Is that right?
Yep.
And then management and executive level positions are more in a $75 to $150,000 range.
So what kind of, can we give just like a general job description of what the full-time salary positions would be? And would that include benefits as well?
It does include benefits.
Okay. So what type of job descriptions generally would fall into that range?
There are a lot of operational jobs that are, you know, part of hospitality and front-of-house operations, you know, working the box office, the retail, food and beverage, you know, just kind of maintaining the facility itself. But there are some creative jobs that are included in that as well. Of course, there's a lot of creative work to be done in the work that we do. So there are positions for artists of a wide range.
So when you're looking at Norman, is it gonna be a similar model like you have set up at Factory Obscura in Oklahoma City? Or are you looking to, I think it's, more space would be available to you. So I'm assuming it would be a larger operation. Would that be a reasonable assumption?
That is correct. And it will include more components than we were able to create at the space in Oklahoma City, like food and beverage, attention for food and beverage, fabrication and workshop space, classrooms for community programming.
An outdoor room that would be part, build park that's open and built to public 24/7, be charged.
So I've been really trying to take a little deeper dive into just how your model is set up in Oklahoma City. And, you know, I think like any organization, you've grown from when you first had, I believe the words collective that you used, you had a collective of creative people, and started in, I think you've been in two other locations besides the one that you're in now. Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay. So, you know, I'm sure as you've grown, you know, you have adapted and, you know, maybe changed your employment practices and things like that. And I think, you know, one of the things that really got our attention in the initial conversation that we had was this possibility of being able to employ artists. And so if you could just kind of help me understand what your current model is and how you think that's gonna be adapted for Norman. So you have founder, you are the founders, and then you have, and I got this all off your website, so. And it's, you have an art design team, and that's 30 people, and five of those were founding artists, so I assume means that they've been with you from the very beginning, right? Is that right? Okay. And then you also had another list of people of contributors, past and present, so people that maybe have come and gone for any number of reasons. And then you have staff. So what, where are the employment opportunities in your current model with those, like founders, art design team, staff? So how does that work?
So the staff that are on the website currently, that list that you were seeing is our operating staff at the state in Oklahoma City. Those are the folks who run the...
Nine people?
Uh huh. And so they are running our box office, our gift shop, maintaining the space there. And then the artist team, that list that you were looking at on our website is a group of artists that we work with regularly, and they are often engaged in all different kinds of projects, depending on what we have going on at that time. Most of those artists are working with us on a contract basis currently. So it's kind of project by project. And you mentioned, you know, as we've grown over the last few years, that we've adapted the way that we do things. And one thing that we have learned, when we started, I really thought our goal was to create as many full-time jobs for artists as possible.
Okay, that's an understanding.
And that is still a big goal. But in working with artists and actually starting to provide full-time jobs for artists, we realized that actually a lot of artists prefer the project-by-project employment, because it gives them flexibility to plug into our work and make something big and collaborative in a way that they would never do on their own, and then go take some time to work on their own private practice a little bit, and then come back and do a project with us again later. So it allows them to maintain their personal practice in addition to the work they're doing with Factory Obscura. So we have started to adapt our model to allow for artists to participate in both ways, where they can work with us on a contract basis as their creative practice allows, but also artists who can have full-time jobs with us and work with us in an ongoing way for that stability, depending on how they wanna work and work for what works best for them.
So how many artists do you employ right now?
We have one full-time artist employed. We had several more pre-COVID. Of course, COVID changed a lot of things for us that we are still recovering from. But all the art, most of the artists we work with currently are on a contract basis.
Okay. So they are being, they are being compensated financially in some way?
Yes, absolutely.
And so do you have contracts with them? Okay. And so, because the other thing that you had mentioned, year three, year three to five, that you're estimating, and we understand this is all conceptual at this point, but it's just trying to understand, you know, how this is all gonna play out, or at least have a better understanding how it's gonna play out, that you're projecting that you could possibly employ 70 employees. So would that be a combination of staff, creative design team, management staff? So it'd be a combination that would all feed into that number. So I guess the question for me is, anyone who is contributing to Factory Obscura, would they be eligible or competing for a paying job? I mean, is everything a paid job, whether it's contract labor or an extended full-time job, if you're on the staff, I would assume it would be what we would commonly understand. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get tripped up on semantics, because I think when we talk about full-time jobs, for someone like me who is not in the art world, you know, that means it's, you're hired and you have a job unless you wanna leave it, or you don't, you know, you have to leave for some other reason. And I'm not sure that's really how it works in the art world for the reasons that you just eliminated, talked about. So, so there's a combination of paths to being employed as a creative?
Correct. Yes. And it is very important to us that any time we work with artists, they are paid for the work that they do, whether it's through full-time employment or contract work. We can't pay the artists, we just don't do it.
Okay.
In our current model, the first three and a half years being system design, construction, and installation of the art, the large proportion of our employees are contracted, but they will be artists. As we shift toward the operational mode, the proportions will be reversed, they will be a little more standardized to the operational model. But that being said, when we talk about artists, when we hire, most of our employees are artists. They are not hired as artists, if you will. So they serve in a position as a gift shop service person, but she's an artist, if that makes sense. However, when we call, we're gonna hire artists, hiring artists in the quality of artists where their performance is strong, to be paid in that type of form, too, that would be a nationalized designer, would be a marketing designer and such. So yeah, it will afford you a lot.
So as you're thinking about the Norman model, and how you would adapt what you're doing now to how it might apply to Norman, I think one of the concerns that I've heard from constituents in Norman, because we have a pretty vibrant arts community in Norman, and I think there's some concern that, you know, they won't, that this will have some negative impact on our current art scene in Norman. And one of the things, I went back and, you know, read some of the notes I had from some of our initial meetings, and you stated at one of the earlier meetings that your intention is not to compete with existing resources that we already have, but to complement. So could you maybe address those types of concerns that I hear from constituents? And if, you know, how would a person apply to be employed at Factory Obscura? You know, what are you looking for? You know, how would you exist side by side and, you know, work within the arts community that's already here? If you could address some of those things?
Well, first, let's say that we don't have a big enough team to build our next project in Norman without hiring people. And we fully intend to come and hire people in Norman. But our processes happen, it's always an open process that happens online primarily. We send out, you know, the notification that we're hiring on the website and in social media, and we get usually at least 100 applications for each job that we post, a lot of interest. And we start combing through because we're looking for certain skills, of course, and we start fitting those things together, interviewing people, finding people who we think that we might be able to work with. So that process will be, you know, open and visible, and we'll be really looking forward to engaging the community here. And in fact, we have artists already from Norman who are on our current team, our current team in our current projects.
So yeah, the other part of it is, yes, we still feel the same way that we did before about adding to the resources of the community and not depleting them. And that was a conscious conversation that we had in the very beginning when we started Factory Obscura, was about creating new opportunities and making the pie for all of us bigger and not taking away from the pie that already exists of funding and resources for art and artists in Oklahoma. And so that was one of the reasons why we formed as a for-profit and not a nonprofit, because we don't wanna be competing for the same grant opportunities that all of our nonprofit arts organizations are already depending on. We want to create new grant opportunities in the future for artists and arts organizations. You know, part of our mission as a D corporation is to support arts education. So that is part of our model, is to dedicate some of our profits to arts education and the community. So yes, part of our goal is to add to, make the community bigger and add more resources.
So the process to be a part of Factory Obscura in Norman would be an open employment process and open call for the skill sets that you were looking for. So that would be accessible to anybody who wanted to apply and be a part of it.
Yeah. And we'll come to Norman also with community mixers, bipartisan mixers, and, you know, get a chance to meet people who are interested in working with us or finding out art projects. We'll make some good opportunities.
So just, I'm assuming, you know, so we're talking about years three to five with the projected number of 70, but when you first begin, I would assume, just based on what I've learned so far about, you know, what you do, that you would have a need for a lot of people upfront to start, you know, building your concept and your immersive experience. And so that would be an opportunity for maybe, I don't know, a few months or an extended period of time, but then I'm assuming that would slack off. So...
Some of those in short-term.
Yeah. And so is that made clear? I mean, is that the kind of thing that you made clear with those that are on your creative team? We're hiring you for this period of time. It will likely run three months, it could run six months. And if you have contracts and that sort of thing that you've been using already, so that artists understand what their compensation is gonna be before they ever start?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it always includes a timeline, and the payment structure is different depending on the process, whether it's a flat fee for the project, or an hourly rate, or, you know, weekly rate, whatever, depending on what the project is.
Yeah. Cause I've talked to, you know, a few artists that are here in Norman, and, you know, there's just a lot of ways that they try to maintain a standard of living, and it's hard. And a lot of artists have full-time jobs, maybe not even related to what they do. And so having, it sounds like there are a lot of different paths and options. There could be an option for somebody who is really looking and needing a full-time experience, like we commonly would understand what that means. But there also are opportunities for what I would call contract labor or short-term, short-term opportunities to be compensated for your work with the understanding this is not a permanent job.
Right.
So do those, that contract labor, are there benefits included with that, too? Or does it depend on?
There haven't been. And what we are looking at is being able to offer stuff and cover half of their insurance, helping them, we work with an insurance broker who can help them get their insurance through the marketplace, and then we can come in, you know, pay half of their insurance during the time that they're... And then we can come, come in, you know, pay half of their insurance during the time that they're with us.
And you mentioned that you are a for-profit, now I'm assuming you did not start that way?
We did.
Oh, you did, from the very beginning? Okay, so have, are you a B corporation now?
We are.
Okay, and could you elaborate on, on what that means? I had to look that up too.
Yeah, it's a relatively new business designation. The state of Oklahoma just started recognizing it in the last couple of years. Um, but the B stands for benefit, so it's, it's a benefit corporation. So we're a for-profit company, but with a social benefit component. So it's almost like a hybrid of a for-profit and a nonprofit model. Um, so, the real beauty of it is that our community impact mission, the arts education circus that I mentioned, is baked into the structure of the company. So it's not just something that the current founders have, the pet project. The leadership changes in the future, it's built in. It's not something that future leadership can decide to change. It's part of the company for the life of it. And that was something that really appealed to us, that it's something that's really, it's baked in, investors who come in understand that a portion of our profits are always gonna be dedicated to this mission. Um, and it's something that we've talked to others in the field who have set up in this, in this way, and so we really kind of followed in that footsteps.
Yeah, it's fascinating, you know, really, to learn a little bit more about it. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Your question. Councilwoman Foreman.
I think my turn, somehow. Okay, so my question is, here, our equivalent of like MAPs is Norman Forward. So a portion of our hotel sales tax goes to our Norman's art community. Do you receive anything like that from Oklahoma City? And if so, would you need anything like that with Norman?
No, we don't, but we would love it.
Would you open it up to children's field trips?
Yes.
We do that already, absolutely.
Free field trips for all public school kids. And then we have a lot of other school groups that come that are, you know, paying a small fee. I think it's five dollars a kid if it's, you know, a private school or a, or a different kind of school group. Um, we actually have a project right now in our lobby that is built by Tara Burkey students here in Norman, and it's on display in our lobby at Mixtape right now.
It's so cool.
So, yeah, that's, that's the, that is a way that we are able right now to contribute to education and the people that are on this.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Studdling.
Um, I think it's awesome that we have the charity artists in our ward. But, uh, I, I do have a few questions. So I, I, I'm the naysayer, so I love art. We'll start with that. I love the fact that you guys are willing to work with both OU and Norman Public School students. I think that that's a really great opportunity. Uh, however, we, I have had some constituents reach out to me with concerns from your company, and I know as you grow and develop, you have learning curves and bad things happen. It's just part of it as a, as a business. Um, but some of the concerns that were brought up were racism, sexism, reports of misconduct. And specifically here in Norman with the concerts of the Flaming Lips and Wayne, and, and kind of mocking some of the protesters that were out here because of the Indian headdress that was worn. Um, so how do you guys plan on, because what I'm hearing is that the feeling is that some of those issues have gone unresolved, or if they were resolved, it took a long time for that resolution to happen. So, with you coming to Norman and being part of our students, um, both at OU and our public school, how do you guys, how have you banded together to address these kind of issues that you are currently facing? And how do you plan on dealing with those moving forward in the future?
Um, well, first of all, I'd like to address your question about our affiliation with the Flaming Lips and Wayne Coin. We actually don't have an affiliation with them, which is a common misconception. Um, the building that we are in currently in Oklahoma City was previously occupied by them. They rented the building before we did. Uh, and we moved in, there was a slight overlap when we were moving in and they were moving out. And their piece, that's called the King's Mouth, was exhibited in what is currently now our lobby.
Okay.
Um, that is the extent of our relationship. Uh, and we, we don't work with them at this point. Um, we just had an overlap in our building. Um, but a lot of people thought that the Flaming Lips owned the building, and there is sort of a common misconception that they are somehow funders of our work. That has never been the case. Uh, so, just to address that, that's just a misconception that's frankly not true. Um, and then, uh, the other issues that you addressed, uh, yes, we work with a lot of people over the last, we've been, we've existed for a little over four years now, and we've worked with almost 200 artists. And so, with that many people involved, there's bound to be some conflict. Um, and we have tried to be as proactive in addressing any issues that come to our attention. Unfortunately, they haven't always come to our attention as quickly as we would like for us to be able to respond, but when they do, we have taken actions very directly and very quickly. Um, and we have done some trainings with our team. Do you wanna talk about some of the trainings we've done?
The biggest one that we're currently working on is called Conversation Workshops, and it's a local group here in Oklahoma City, who designed all of these workshops around having difficult conversations and discussion in the context of racism. And so, our current staff and artists who we work with have gone through this training, and that's kind of just an ongoing thing that we're committed to. And, and just in general, we're committed to collaborating well, and we have a code of collaboration that everyone agrees to. And we have, yeah, a push now to really react quickly and make sure that we're responding to things as they happen. Because in this world right now, we all are seeing all of these kinds of issues rise to the surface, and it's so important to us to, to be a safe place for, for people who wanna work with us and who want to enter our service. So we are, it's something that we're actively working on.
Okay. Um, and then, I know that she had kind of touched on the B corp, which I'm really excited about. I know part of being a B corp is providing back to your community, as you guys said, as well as, um, the equity piece of it and the employee piece of it. So I'm glad that you brought that up. Um, and then projections. So, I know that you guys plan on eventually employee, employing 70 people here. That's kind of your projections. What are your projections for profit? What do you see yourself in the first? 'Cause I know you said it's gonna take at least about three to five years to fully get up and running. What do you see once you're up and running as your projections within the first five years?
I believe that, uh, year five profits are only eighteen million dollar, right?
And that's meaning, year five, meaning you've built it? It's the first year that you're really open?
Yes, eight years from, from today.
Eight years, gotcha, okay. This is year of operations, gotcha, yeah.
Three and a half years of construction until we are through. And then, um, as, you know, just assuming, uh, five hundred thousand visitors and at current dollar.
That's a lot of visitors.
That's a lot of kids.
That's a lot of sales talks, guys.
Um, okay, and then, uh, you had mentioned that in between that time, you guys like to do a lot of events while you're kind of building the space out. Um, so is that something then that you see, like, how did that work in Oklahoma City? Or did it, since you really didn't have this space?
It really did, it was so good. We built, um, a boombox on the front of our building that you could interact with from the outside, which was intently.
Ten feet high, twenty foot wide boombox.
Yeah, it has music, has video, you come up to push the buttons, and, you know, things happen inside there, so that started drawing people right away. The building itself where we are is iconic, so that was already there. People coming to take their photos and everything. And then we built and opened our gift shop very early on. So that first summer while we were building inside the building, we had our gift shop open and we had a big summer solstice block party. We walked the street, we put in a roller rink. We had just all kinds of fun, cool, art activities happening. And we do those events with sponsors, free and open to the public. So we always have things happening outside our building that people can just come and enjoy without ever, you know, wanting to get or stepping inside.
That was something I was gonna ask. I know you guys still with a lot of musicians that are here, that are in Oklahoma. Um, so if you guys are building your inside art installation, then I would assume you could have concerts and things like that outdoors. But you don't charge for those, those are free?
That's right, yeah, usually the outdoor things are free.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's all I thought, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Councilwoman Lynn.
So, these guys ran and raved about what you have going in Oklahoma City. I never experienced anything like it, except I just got back from Las Vegas and I got to experience two immersive art experiences, fantastic. One of them was Vincent or Van Gogh or something along those lines. I think they have one in Dallas. Another one was at, uh, Bright Lights, it's at the Neon History Museum.
Oh.
Blown away, so it'd be awesome to have something along these lines in Norman. And if you're bringing in five hundred and some thousand people and you're taking a, what, excuse my language, a crappy old building down. Something awesome like that. I don't, I don't see, I'm just saying the slam note for everybody, however we figure it out. I'm excited for it. I didn't think, like, they were like, you wanna go to the Van Gogh thing, whatever? I was like, oh, I'll go, 'cause I didn't have anything to do. And then it was one of the most amazing things I've ever been to, it was awesome.
Nice.
So, I'm all about it.
Councilman Peacock?
I'll just second that enthusiasm.
Madam Mayor, with, uh, council's indulgence, what we'll do is, uh, we'll continue the conversation with the folks at Factory Obscura. And sometime right after the first of the year, we'll bring you, uh, some proposals on how we will relocate our current operations out of the space, uh, and what that timing may look like. So we'll keep you posted every step of the way and stay in constant communication with, uh, the folks at Factory Obscura.
Thank you so much. We welcome any of you to Oklahoma City to visit what we've already built. And we will spend as much time with you as you want to answer all your questions about our company and let you get to know us.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dean.
Okay, onto our second item, a discussion regarding status of the FYE 2022 Capital Improvement Program budget in preparation of the FYE 2023 Capital Improvements Program budget.
Well, good even, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Kim Kaufman, the Budget Manager. This is Jacob Huckabee, the Budget Technician. And tonight, uh, we're gonna be giving some updates on the fiscal year 2022 capital project and the capital improvements plan. And then we're gonna seek some, uh, feedback from the council on some proposed projects for the fiscal year ending 2023. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jacob.
Alright. Okay, so this first slide is just gonna be a couple of important dates as we go throughout this process. Uh, the first one is gonna be today. Uh, the next bullet is gonna be our next meeting, which is gonna be February 15th of 2022. And at this meeting, we're gonna discuss, uh, all the proposed new projects that we received throughout the process. And then, following that, uh, we are going to have a meeting on May 3rd, 2022, where we will review the final proposed plan for fiscal, fiscal year ending 2023. So this slide is just gonna kind of give a general overview of where we get these projects from, how we pick them, kind of how we go about setting these projects out. So the, the purpose of this capital improvement plan is gonna be to improve the services that the city offers to our public. And we do so by setting these long-range master plans that are reviewed by the citizens, and they're gonna be reviewed and adopted by council. And all the priorities in these short-range and long-range plans are gonna be set by council. And what I mean by the short range is, that's gonna be the year-to-year budget that's adopted. And the long range is going to be the five-year plan following, where we schedule out the projects and you can see when the money's coming in for various projects. And, um, as always, after these are adopted, if an emergency like an ice storm comes up or a high priority project like the Imhoff Bridge happens, we can go to council and you can allocate those funds as needed. So what is a capital project? Um, a capital project is a project that's usually gonna cost more than $100,000. Doesn't have to meet that point to be considered a capital project, but usually they do. Um, they're gonna be relatively fixed and permanent in nature, and they're gonna have a lifespan of usually more than five years. So this is gonna be, uh, construction of a new building, refurbishing an old building, or somehow expanding one of our assets. And, uh, with these projects, they're usually gonna take more than one fiscal year to complete. And so, that's why we have a plan to schedule out certain funds where if you have a project, the, the first year you adopt might be the design phase, second year might be construction, so that's where you'll see those schedules come into play. So you'll also see in the capital improvement plan, uh, there's portions for capital outlay. And this is gonna be, uh, purchasing equipment, um, things like cars, trucks, desks, IT equipment. And these are usually gonna have a lifespan of less than five years. Could have more, could have less. Um, they're gonna be a one-time occurrence, uh, one-time expense usually. They're not gonna be scheduled out multiple years. They might be similar year to year, but they're not gonna be stretched out over multiple years. So this is just gonna be a list of all the funds that are included in the capital improvement plan budget. All these have capital projects in them. The most notable one's gonna be the capital fund. It's broken up into two portions, which is gonna be the pay-as-you-go portion and the general obligation bond portion. The pay-as-you-go portion's gonna be made up of those capital sales tax funds. And the general obligation bonds portion's gonna be from those big bond projects and programs that we put together. And this is also, um, a continuation of the list with the enterprise funds. These are gonna be funds where the projects are, um, funded through user fees and charges for those services. So they usually won't use, um, capital fund sales tax. Uh, this slide is just a, um, chart showing where all the revenue for these projects comes from. As you can see on this chart, uh, currently, bonds is going to be the largest portion for this fiscal year. Uh, this is gonna be the 2021 street maintenance bond, 2019 transportation program. All these are gonna be in that little, uh, piece of the pie. The second largest is gonna be the user fees, which makes up all those, um, projects for the enterprise funds. And then, uh, this one is, uh, the same year. This is gonna be where that revenue goes and the expenses. The largest portion of this is gonna be buildings and grounds. This is gonna be the Young Family Building, the Senior Citizen Center. All these are pretty big projects, that's gonna be a pretty big portion of where these expenses go. And then, uh, next we're gonna have the transportation section, which is gonna have bridges, road projects, all these big 36th Avenue widening projects. So what is the capital improvements fund? So the capital improvements one, fund was established in 1976, and it accounts for all the capital projects that are funded by the capital sales tax. And so all these projects are gonna go to services that don't have their own dedicated, uh, special revenues, like the enterprise funds. And so how is the capital fund funded? It is funded with a seven tenths of one percent sales tax, which was set aside by that same referendum in 1976. And all the projects that are approved for construction within, uh, those funds are gonna be accounted for in that capital improvements fund. So this slide is just gonna give a chart showing some general guidelines of how we like to allocate those revenues. This is not a set in stone set of guidelines, but we do like to try to follow that as closely as possible. These were set by a previous council, and so, um, something to note going forward that, uh, these can be changed by, uh, council going forward. And so this slide is the status of the capital fund. And as you can see in this pay-go portion of the capital fund, which is the portion funded by the sales tax, for the next few years, we currently have, um, a pretty significant negative balance in the projections and the estimations for new projects. Now, the reason for this is primarily gonna be from the 2012 bond program, transportation bond program. And, um, I'll go ahead and say we have a slide later on in the presentation where we lay out a plan of how staff wants to tackle that and get this number down to a much more manageable number, so. And now I'll turn it over to our Budget Manager, Kim Kaufman, to go over some of the project status updates.
So please let us know, uh, when you have questions, and we'll get them answered for you. Uh, some significant projects closed in fiscal year 22. Uh, that means the work is complete and the bills are paid. That's gonna be the, uh, emergency communication system radio project from our PSST fund that closed in June. There was about 1.1 million left over from that budget, and those funds were transferred to the Emergency Operations Center. The ADA Transition Plan, which was sidewalks on the south side of Main Street, sidewalks and trails on 24th Avenue Northeast, and Legacy Park parking lot. Projects completed in fiscal year '22, and completed means the work is finished, but all the bills have not been paid. The TMDL Compliance and Monitoring Plan Implementation Year Five, Aspen Avenue Parking Lot, State Highway Nine Multimodal Path, 36th Avenue East to 48th Avenue East, Vicksburg Storm Pipeline Replacement, 12th Avenue Northeast Traffic Signal Interconnect, Alameda Street to Robinson Street, 24th Avenue East Bond Project, Creston Wayne Schultz Storm Water Improvements, Legacy Trail Extension along 24th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest, sidewalks on Hall-Moldger Drive, sidewalks on Stubman Avenue from Robinson to Timber Wolf Trail Phase One. Some projects underway in the current fiscal year. The Transit Parks Emergency Vehicle Maintenance Facilities up on North Base, TMDL Compliance and Monitoring Plan Implementation Year Six, Lake Thunderbird TMDL Data Analysis and Plan Update, and TMDL means Total Maximum Daily Load. I can't get much into that beyond that, but... And then the Engineering Design Criteria Update and Green Storm Water Infrastructure Review, Fire Station 9, they're just finishing some miscellaneous small items. And the Fire Administration Building renovation is 85% complete. Porter Avenue and Acres Street Intersection, the Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan Update, Merkel Creek Channel Stabilization, and Imhoff Road Bridge Emergency Repair Project.
Kim, just one quick question. Mr. O'Leary, when do we anticipate a ribbon cutting on the emergency vehicle maintenance facility on North Base? Best guess?
Yeah, probably early January. We hope to occupy the building in December. Kind of touch and go, lots of, you know, end-of-project items to address. But we're hoping to occupy the building in mid-December, get through the holidays, and have a nice...
So we'll check with council, make sure everybody's available on the calendar date that's selected for that event. It'll be a wonderful ribbon cutting for us.
Thank you. And here's an image of that proposed project. We're all very excited about that. Projects under construction in the next couple of years, of course, the municipal complex renovation, 36th Avenue Northwest, I-35 and Robinson Street, scheduled completion February 2022. I know a lot of us are excited about that. We'll be discussing this project in more detail later. Claussen Boulevard sidewalks from Boyd to 12th Avenue, Flood Avenue sidewalks from Gray Street to Acres Street, Porter Avenue Streetscape, Imhoff Creek stabilization, the Traffic Management Center, Constitution Street Multimodal Path, James Garner Phase Two from Flood to Acres, ADA Transition Plan, 24th Avenue Northwest from Main Street to Robinson Street Phase One, and then the CIP sidewalks, Alameda Street, Porter Avenue to 12th Avenue Northeast. Transportation Storm Water Bond Program, this monster. Of course, with Lindsay Street, we had some unavoidable cost overruns, and staff has worked hard to manage with the rest of the program. Next on the list, of course, is 36th Avenue Northwest to Comsta to Indian Hills Road. And so this slide shows staff's plan to fund the deficit left over from these projects. You know, the total bond amount was 42.5 million. The current projections for these projects in the 2012 Transportation Storm Water Bond Program are 48.3 million. And so we have an estimated deficit of 5.8 million. And here you have staff's plan on how to fund that gap. And we were able to fund the gap, or we were able to find solutions to fund the gap to 5.8 million. With council concurrence, you know, staff will submit an agenda item on December 14th to close these projects, the completed projects, and transfer those funds to reconcile this bond program as shown here. Any questions or any?
Councilor Studley?
I'm completely green about this stuff. So where it says transfer of surplus funds from 2010 and 2016 maintenance bond programs, does that mean that since 2010, we've had $2 million in surplus? And since 2016, we've had $1.5 million in surplus hanging out?
I'll turn that over to Sean.
Those are the dates that the bonds were passed.
Okay.
So the projects were completed over the years since then. Once the projects have been finally completed, because it's general obligation bond money, you can only use any excess for similar projects. They have to be used for street projects. And what's proposed here is it will be transferred for the 2012 projects, particularly for the 36th Avenue and Alameda projects.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, Councilor Studley, we'll talk about some more details later, but this is only part of the surplus. So both programs came in under budget or have nearly come in under budget on the most recent one, 2016 to 2021, upwards of 15%. So we're pretty proud of the program, completed every project. And now, as Anthony said, we've got money left over to spend on street maintenance or street reconstruction.
What's our total number that we have left over?
I think in the 2010 program, this is probably the extent of it, the $2 million, which has already been transferred or in process. But in the 2016, we're just now auditing that program. We're just finishing the last projects, and we're looking at upwards of $7 million left over, which is pretty remarkable.
That's awesome. All right, thank you.
Good. Councilor Holman?
Couple of questions. Just two projects in Ward Seven here, partly in Ward Seven. The Claussen Boulevard sidewalks, Boyd Street to 12th, thinking that's going to get underway within the next year or so?
Certainly in the next few months.
Okay, great.
Probably, we fudged a bit to put it on the construction list. We're anxious to get started. We're just finishing up a few Bible easements right now.
That's a pretty major area close to campus that doesn't have sidewalks currently, at least not complete on both sides there. And then the Constitution Street Multimodal Path, which is a separate project from our street project.
Right, grant project, ODOT grant project that's on your next agenda, I think, November 30th. Is that right, David? And we're going to be looking at matching, the local match with some Norman Forward trail dollars. If you, if council concurs, and that will take bids in March and build the project starting in June.
And that's south side of Constitution?
That's north side.
North side from Jenkins to the tracks? Or all the way to?
All the way to Claussen.
Okay, great.
Crossing two bridges and a railroad track.
It's a big one. Yes, okay. Just want to check on that. And then I've asked you multiple times, you've answered very clearly. But for any of our new folks, may not be aware of why the Lindsay Street project was so much over budget. If you could just give everyone that may not be familiar a brief explanation for that.
At the risk of oversimplifying, most of it had to do with the stormwater portion of the project. We have a pipeline leading from Lindsay Street all the way to the river. The original intent was to take that pipeline directly into the I-35 right away, right at the aligning where Lindsay aligns with I-35. After the bond issue was passed by the voters, ODOT rejected that notion. So we had to take a very large stormwater pipeline another mile to the river instead of taking it directly to I-35. It's about a $5 to $7 million increase that wasn't anticipated in the original project. Also had some land acquisition, cost increases, and some other things. But council and staff at that time chose to proceed with all elements of the project as defined, knowing that we would be overspending the local share and try to make it up later in the program.
Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
Councilor Peacock?
Uh, yeah, in regards to 36th, are we still eyeing infrastructure package dollars to kind of make that thing whole?
Yes, sir. We actually were in conversation today regarding the infrastructure package. And actually, there's a bill pending that would give us more flexibility. It's not that we're currently, you know, we're oversubscribed in ARPA funding, but they're trying to loosen up rules on ARPA where you can use that for infrastructure as well. We think we're fine programmed with ARPA dollars the way council already has it programmed. And in the broad categories of infrastructure packages, that transportation project for 36 Northwest fits in beautifully.
The exciting part about that, I was on a meeting today about the infrastructure bills since it was signed yesterday, if you all didn't catch that. We don't know how, it's not going to be a direct funding like ARPA and CARES. And so we're waiting on a guide that should be in the coming weeks that we'll talk if it's matched, if it's grant. If there could be some direct funding. But what's exciting about, and if we can go to the next slide, is about that project, is that bottom bullet point, it's just project is shovel-ready. So I think even if it is match funds or anything like that, we're ready to go. So I'm confident as well that that will qualify nicely with the infrastructure bill.
Thank you.
So 36th Avenue is the next project in the 2012 Transportation Storm Water Bond Program. And it widens two miles of roadway from two-lane to four-lane, some new traffic signals, storm water improvements, continuous sidewalks, and accessibility improves access to Ruby Grant Park. Construction is pending, of course, due to delay in federal match, and like Mayor said, it is shovel-ready. The East Alameda Street Bond Project, it's also part of the 2012 Transportation Bond Program. It's also shovel-ready. The funds to complete this project, there's 1.1 million in the 2012 Transportation Bond, and then some surplus funds from the 2016 maintenance bond of about 3 million, and then 216,000 from the 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program. So this is another item with council concurrence. Funding can be allocated, and the project can be bid in December for a March construction start.
Councilor Holm?
Are these the last two projects in the 2012 bond?
Yes.
Okay.
Two of them, eight, eight, so I'm going to...
Yeah, but these are, when we finish these, we can check that box. Okay.
Councilor Holm?
Yes, just to be clear, because we've heard stories in the community over the years about why these two projects haven't been done, mainly the 36th project. But just to be clear, we're ready, we've been ready. We've been waiting on the federal government, which was always planned.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Council, right. The other key element there is that the process of allocating funds or ranking projects in the metropolitan area changed midstream just a few years ago. And so projects like this were pretty automatic for us over the last 20 or 30 years, and they've become much less automatic in recent years. These two projects are the casualties of that change in ranking and rating process.
So the city of Norman, though, we've done everything we can possibly do to get these projects done already.
We have, and again, shovel-ready. And the other key point, I think it's lost on some folks, is our share of the bond funds that our voters approved are in the bank. We're ready to do our share. We just are missing the other 80%.
Thank you.
Yes.
So this is an overview of the 2019 Transportation Bond Program, and our project managers have done an excellent job of managing these costs. And you can see that we have excess funds in most of these projects currently. And then, of course, the funds, the excess funds will be utilized to fund future 2019 Transportation Bond Program projects. So this is the Porter Avenue and Acres Street Intersection, part of the 2019 Transportation Bond Program. They're going to add turning lanes, pedestrian sidewalk improvements, streetscape improvements, safety and sight distance improvements, a new signal at the intersection. Construction slated to begin November 20, well, I guess it already has begun. And they're looking to complete construction next month. So this is a $3.3 million cost.
Councilor Holm?
So December 2021, Mr. O'Leary?
Absolutely. I'd like to tell you, we are days away from finishing. You'll start to see striping and some other signs of finishing. Unfortunately, we are a victim of the supply issues. So all of our traffic signal projects are sitting on a boat in Long Beach. We think, I'm kidding, but they're starting to come in. And literally, the traffic signal, which is the foundation of that project, is not here yet. Steel pole. We hope it'll come next week. That's our latest projection. And so we'll see the final stage, which is the signal portion going up next week.
So we're very close.
Very close.
And planning a ribbon cutting for Porter?
Congratulations.
I don't know if we did a ribbon cutting.
I don't know if we've ever done a ribbon cutting for a street project.
We need the ribbon cutting for Porter and for the Imhoff Bridge.
Look like the finish line kind of a thing?
We did a ribbon cutting for the first of the 2012 projects that was finished, which was Cedar Lane. And that was the first new street to have bike lanes in Norman. So we had a ribbon cutting with the county commissioners and Sean, and we both waited at the podium and everything down there. Closed the street down, we got in the middle of the street and cut the ribbon in the middle of the, and then that was it.
And then Lindsay Street Bridge.
Since Porter's mostly closed, we can have a little three-party, where we take all those barricades away.
It's open.
Yeah, they open it.
Yeah, they open it.
I drive it every day, and I almost had tears of joy in my head. Someone told me what a nerd I was, so. All right, continue, please.
So next in the 2019 Transportation Bond Program is the Porter Avenue Streetscape. It's decorative lighting, pedestrian ADA improvements, decorative concrete sidewalks, a new bus stop, place-making gateways and landscaping. Construction's slated to begin next summer and hopefully will end a year later, and this is a $4.2 million cost. So James Garner Avenue Phase Two, Acres Street to Flood Avenue. This was from a Norman Ford and Federal grant. And this is decorative lighting, a new bridge over Robinson Street, an extension of Legacy Trail, landscape median, limited access express route to downtown. And this is slated to begin next summer to be completed the following summer. This is a $6.3 million cost. The I-35 and Robinson Street West Side UNP TIF project, this is another celebrated project, and everybody can't wait for this to be finished, but this was funded, $2 million from the University North Park TIF. And then there was a $4 million federal match for a total of $6 million. This started in April of this year, and we hope construction will be complete by February in just a few months. Norman's Surface Transportation Program/Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, and Sean touched on this briefly a minute ago, but it's, of course, our objective to maximize federal funds to match our revenues. And staff works hard to secure these funds. We compete for these funds with other cities. And of course, like Sean mentioned, we were hit with a major formula change on how those funds were awarded in recent years. So red outlines the funds that we've secured through fiscal year '23, and yellow is what we hope to apply for beginning fiscal year 2024. So next is a summary of the fiscal year ending 2016 to 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program. These projects have been completed on time and under budget, and the surplus must be used for street maintenance, and staff has some proposals listed here for the surplus in funds. And their proposals are 1.5 million to the 2012 Transportation Bond Program, as we discussed, 3 million to East Alameda Bond Project, and 2.4 million for additional street maintenance in neighborhoods. So this is our new fiscal year ending 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program that the voters approved this past April. And we're well underway with this program.
Councilor Schuler?
Sorry, we're back one slide. That 2.4 million from surplus from 2016, that's going to go additional to street maintenance and neighborhoods. Do we have a list of that? Or is that as things come up in neighborhoods, like issues?
Sure, we always have a list.
I know you have a list.
Always more to do. But that's really why we're here tonight, to ask you if you agree in this approach. We're not presuming that we're going to do any of these things until council approves them. So if you concur in this approach with the $6.9 million surplus that to transfer some of that to the 2012 Bond Program, transfer some of that to the East Alameda, then there would be 2.4 left over. And we would then bring for you a program of new neighborhood projects using our Fayette Management System to select those streets.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So these are three projects that are slated to be in this 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program, Claussen Boulevard, Damburen Street, and Franklin Road. This is another item that we're looking for council consensus on. These are recurring sidewalk projects that we're proposing for fiscal year ending 2023. And these projects normally receive this recurring funding. Public Works is asking for a $50,000 increase to the city's sidewalk project funding that has been $50,000 annually in the past. that has been 50,000 annually in the past. But it'd be 80,000 for schools and arterials, 30,000 for sidewalk accessibility, 100,000 for citywide sidewalk project, that's the citywide 50/50 repair, 50,000 for downtown area sidewalk projects, 120 for sidewalks and trails, and then 40,000 for the horizontal saw cut program.
I'd just mention that the resolutions that we passed at the last meeting from ACOG were, helped us supplement some of these things, because there's so much to be done in our community. So I think it's, it's awesome that we're doing so much and still trying to get more funds to address them. Councilor Hall.
Yeah, I want to particularly highlight the citywide sidewalk project and the 50/50 repair program. I know that's been enormously popular. So could you just briefly address, you know, the history of it that we've, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure we've spent every single dollar every year and the, the more that residents are aware that this program is available, the more applications you're seeing to participate, I think.
Certainly, I think that we've been very successful this year.
Yeah.
This is probably the largest amount that we've ever spent in this program. We've been very active and going back to some of the older problems have been outlying out there that have been kind of sitting still, bringing those back up. We've also been able to go after some little bit larger projects, usually the Triangle Fraternity and their issues where those sidewalks are just completely damaged. That was a larger project than we normally wouldn't have been able to do. But this year we did come to council and we asked if we could please transfer some money around within our sidewalk programs to bring another $45,000 in, because we'd already expended our 50,000 for the year and this was about two months ago. And this year, something else we've been much more proactive about is that 50% match that comes from the citizens. We've been coming to you and asking if we can transfer that money back into the program. So we've actually been reinvesting that money back in. So when you look at our total expenditures on this, we're going to well exceed $100,000 by December, so in six months. And it has been very active. We do seem, I think that we're seeing more sidewalk complaints in the past two years than we have in the previous years. And I think it is because people are seeing success and being able to report their problems and us being able to go out and address them quickly and accurately. Many of these projects are being completed within 30 to 45 days from their initial report. So we're decreasing that timeframe by being very proactive with it and also being able to go out there and really work with a lot of citizens. We had a couple of complaints with more of a neighborhood area, two or three blocks in the neighborhood. And we went out, we canvassed those, we marked them all down and then we were able to go out and address each one of those and work with those property owners individually to get their 50/50 opportunity to, to utilize this program. So I think that we've seen a lot of improvement in the program, but I think we've also seen a lot more usage by the, by the citizens of Norman as they've become more aware of this program. And it's amazing, it used to be, we'd get the phone call that, "My sidewalk is broken, you need to come fix it." And we'd say, "Well, okay, well, that's your responsibility." But we have a program and it used to be that was a point of contention. It seems like lately it's more like, "Oh, really? So I can get some help to pay for this." We're even in some instances working with a property owner if they're having issues with being able to pay the amount. We're looking at it individually and trying to address what we can do to help any, any issue we can to make sure we have ADA compliant sidewalks.
Well, thank you. This is literally one of my favorite programs that we run in the city of Norman and I think most residents are surprised that the sidewalk is their responsibility. So once you get past that educational piece of why that is, having this available to reduce the shock value of what it's going to take and the fact that they don't have to go hire anybody to do the work, we are at the ready and prepared to do that work. So I am in complete support of finding whatever changes under the couch to pour back into the city sidewalk project. I mean, it's acutely apparent in Ward Four of the continued need, but this is all across the city, anywhere in the city of Norman. Yeah. So thank you. Really appreciate all your work and how proactive you have been on this program. So thank you for that.
Councilor Studley.
I touched on my question about if, if it's a 50/50 split, you guys provide the contracting work, all that stuff. So literally the citizen just has to pay the other half of the bill and split that cost with the city.
That's correct. So we reach out to them, we send them an official letter, we try to reach out to them and contact them by phone or in person. We'll actually go knock on doors and then we, if we, if it's by letter, in that letter we say it's this cost, if you pay this amount, we'll pick up the rest. We do give them the option of trying to find their own contractor. We have, we've had several people say, "I can get it done cheaper," and they call back in about three weeks and go, "So can we use your contractor?" It's very hard to find contractors right now and they find out that really because we're leveraging $400,000 worth of work with one contractor, that our unit cost is so much more effective than what they can do. But yes, that's exactly it. They, we do go out and really they just send a check and wait for the work to get done. They don't really have to do anything. And then we work with them while, of course, while we're at their residence or at the residence to make sure that whatever needs to be done, to make sure that their site is left as it was found. We work with that also to make sure it's done correctly.
Good deal. Thank you so much. Councilor Holman.
Just mention real quick that, in my opinion, the horizontal saw cut program, dollar for dollar, is maybe one of the best investments that we've made, definitely in the time I've been on council. The results are visible in extending the life of old sidewalks and making them ADA compliant and for the cost. That's, it's been an amazing program and I'm hoping we continue that and maybe increase it in the future.
So the bridge maintenance program. Historically, we've allocated about $100,000 in fiscal year '21. We increased this to $500,000. And of those funds, about 20% is for design and 80% is for construction completed in fiscal year '21. We've got these bridges here, 156th Avenue Northeast, West Rock Creek Road, Westbrook Street, East Boyd Street, 72nd Avenue Southeast and Concord Drive. Completed in fiscal year '22 is 48th Avenue Southeast and Cedar Lane Road. The Imhoff Road Bridge Emergency Repair originally identified for maintenance in the '22 Bridge Maintenance Program scheduled to be complete in March of '22. The proposed Bridge Replacement Bond Program, 77 bridges in Norman, 15 bridges need full replacement, 12 bridges are structurally deficient, four bridges are functionally obsolete, three bridges are at risk of becoming structurally deficient, six bridges have load postings of less than 23 tons. The total program cost is 40 to 50 million and this is a 10-year construction program.
I'll throw in again, the infrastructure bill, 60% of it is for roads and bridges. So I'm glad that we are putting together scope and cost estimates because, I mean, you know what's coming down the pike and when the guide comes out, we've got a lot of work to do. Councilor Schuler.
Yeah, I was just kind of going to touch on all of that. We've been talking about this since Imhoff Road Bridge went out and we had to, you know, figure out how we were going to emergency repair that bridge and, you know, talking about how are we going to only use $500,000 a year, which is currently allocated to maintain these bridges or, you know, replace and repair. But looking at these numbers, it's really dire. And so just continuing to reiterate all of the conversations that we've had since that bridge on Imhoff Road went out, that we really need to think about a, a program, maybe like our street maintenance program. What does that look like? We've been so successful with our streets. Why can we not think about doing this with our bridges? It's really critical. And then to Mayor's point about thinking about utilizing this incoming infrastructure money to start kind of getting some of these big scale projects off the ground quickly.
So Councilor Schuler, the, the fact that we've been talking bridges and we're in similar position on stormwater projects with $65 million worth that we can roll out in a very efficient, very, well, you know, picture's worth a thousand words and we've got plenty of pictures. So I think we will be dangerously competitive in the infrastructure world, depending on how they decide to distribute on bridges and stormwater projects as well.
Yeah, I just appreciate staff's diligence with all of this and having all of this ready to go so we have it ready as this infrastructure money comes in.
Councilor Hall.
Yeah, I just want to add my support for that, too. We've had a lot of conversations, painful conversations about the dire need for our bridge replacement program. So I'm really going to stay optimistic that we're going to have some success with the infrastructure bill, but I also think we're probably going to need more and definitely support exploring a similar kind of bond proposal because I believe our residents would support something like that.
As I covered today, it's not about, you know, catching up, it's avoiding failed bridges at this point. So, okay. Any other questions about the bridge? Okay, continue, please.
So as Darrell and Mayor pointed out, other potential funding sources would be the ARPA funds from the state. Once, if they pass that bill, that kind of relaxes those spending restrictions. And then this Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, they're supposed to allocate 266 million to Oklahoma for bridge replacement and repairs over five years. So as they said, we're waiting on the details of this. Future traffic signals. 31 signals have been identified through traffic studies. Nine in yellow are on Oklahoma Department of Transportation controlled roadways. 22 in white are on city-controlled roadways and many have trafficked impact fees collected from development. So that's a source of revenue for this.
Councilor Holman.
Yes, on this list, there's two of them I don't see that, I've been under the impression that we were working on Post Oak and Highway 77 and then Highway 77 and High Meadows. I don't see on this map, but I know Mayor Clark and multiple Ward Six council members have had issues with the High Meadows. But I do recall, I thought we have a Post Oak.
We'll check on that. You're exactly right. They're on, they're on our work program.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, here, I asked staff to put this together for you. We've done this in the past years, but just, we get inquiries from you all about traffic signals. Is there, can we get one here or there? We had one recently in Ward Two on Main and Wiley, which wasn't on this list. But part of our point here is to say that we are always looking out. The, the project in Ward One, the Summit Lakes and Alameda Traffic Signal Project was born in 2001, 2001, when Summit Lakes Edition was first platted and approved by council. We identified that someday we might need a traffic signal with that. 20 years later, we're installing a traffic signal. So these things have a long life. We're trying to plan out ahead and, and know when we might need some help with traffic, but it takes many, many years sometimes. Sometimes they never qualify and sometimes we don't get the funding. So we're always happy to add new ones and explore new ones, but realize that you've got 31 pending that are unfunded today and they're, they're probably going to be needed sometime in the future. Average cost of a traffic signal, 200 to 250,000 dollars, just to put that in perspective.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So another proposed project is the City Vehicle Wash Facility. The annual cost to wash the city vehicles is about $100,000. Reduced operation, this would reduce operational costs for city departments. And then there are also environmental impacts of vehicle washing. The estimated construction cost of this vehicle wash facility is about 1.5 million dollars. And currently Norman Utility Authority has 540,000 dollars in funds for wash facility. We have an estimated 480,000 from the Federal Transit Authority. And if we were to receive those, we would need to come up with 480,000 from our own funds to match that. And the wash facility will be located at North Base. We're also working on a feasibility study to develop the new North Base Master Plan or the Public Works and Utilities Facilities Master Plan for the, the design of this area.
Said environmental impacts, are we looking at like impotable water where, you know, we can come in and...
Frankly, Mayor, a lot of times we're washing our vehicles on a parking lot now and that water is, and maybe substances are going into the stormwater system. We shouldn't be doing that. We need a facility that has a stormwater or a sanitary sewer collection system like these do. Want to highlight here, the reason we're really pressing on this now is that now we run a bus system. We wash our buses, Washington our buses every night now. When we move into our new facility next month, we won't be able to do that. We think that's a shame. We need to do a better job of cleaning our buses and so going to a bus wash every two or three weeks, we think is really not going to be suitable. We need a wash facility for the buses and we've needed a wash facility for our other 800 vehicles for a long time. Most cities have one of these 20 or 30 years ago. This is something that the city has put off a long time and, and I think it's the transit system that really is going to drive our immediate needs. And we have a place for it. The little green box there on the map is where we've cited this location next to our two new facilities and next to many of the existing city facilities where a lot of the vehicles that live throughout the, the day. This is also our fueling facility, so all these vehicles come into this location at various times throughout the week. Anyway, it's something we'd sure like to find that, that 480 this year, preferably if we can, to get this project going, but right now it's, it's not fully funded.
If I may, to answer the mayor's question, I was kind of looking around at this, but, but he did talk earlier about the possibility that there are some non-potable water wells in the area that we could pipe to, to use for this facility. So we did want to kind of find out from policy if it's okay for you all to perceive this possibility, trying to find that 480,000 dollars.
Okay, we'll have, we have about five more minutes to give us a break before the hearing. And if we, what we don't get through, which I don't think we're going to get through, we are going to cover in finance on Thursday.
Next is the City Fleet Fueling Facility. Constructed and registered with the Oklahoma Corporation Commission, 1998, fiberglass reinforced underground storage tanks. I'm going to try to go through this quickly. Life expectancy and warranty to 30 years. Fuel storage, 10,000 gallons of diesel and 10,000 gallons of unleaded. And then dispenses 500,000 gallons of fuel annually to set over 793 city vehicles and pieces of equipment. And the challenges are the fuel encasements have failed, allowing groundwater to lay on top of the pumps. Critical repairs are needed in the next three years at about 350 to 500,000 dollars. Alternative fuels such as ethanol and biodiesel are not available due to lack of tanks, limited tank storage capacity for growing fleet, no option for bulk diesel exhaust fluid, fuel islands are deteriorating, and the replacement cost is 1.65 million.
That's for all of those things?
I believe so.
Total price tag? Okay, thank you.
This is the picture of the projects that are underway or planned along State Highway Nine. We've completed continuous paved roadway of four lanes with sidewalks and bike lanes from 24th Avenue to 72nd and then 72nd to 108th Avenue is under construction currently. The City Vehicle Replacement Program, Sean, of course, will tell you that a city our size should be spending at least 4 million dollars a year on vehicle replacements, but we haven't been able to do that with all the other capital equipment needs that the city has. So when these vehicles are replaced, they are truly on their last legs. And in the current fiscal year, we spent about 2 million dollars. That's about our average over the last few years. Our need is much higher than that.
Especially if it hails, just.
I was going to say, we didn't have a hail repair facility for those 793 vehicles built in either. Right, we're going.
Go ahead and stop, I think this is a good time. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn now. We'll begin the public hearing at 6:30 and again, we'll finish this overview at finance at 4 o'clock on Thursday. at 4 o'clock on Thursday.
And all of those things I went through just a minute ago. And council tonight will have the option to listen to what the public has to say about the reapportionment committee's recommendations and then determine whether they want to follow those recommendations, whether they don't want to change the wards, which is not an option we're recommending, and I'll explain that in a minute, or recommend or bring forward different boundaries from what the committee has recommended. So when you look at the rules for reapportionment and you look at all of the case law across the country, the standards you find in the charter and in state law are very similar to what you find across the country. The U.S. Supreme Court has said that population equality is the paramount objective of apportionment, one person, one vote. A lot of people have probably heard of that phrase. That is a means of protecting voters, not elected officials. Now, the Supreme Court says when you're drawing wards, you can deviate from that absolute population equality to accommodate your districting objectives like maintaining communities of common interest and creating geographic compactness. But if you deviate more than 10%, your maps may be invalid. And so that is something that the committee really worked with to try and keep these deviations between wards and no more than 10% to try and keep compliant with that. We do have a lot of diverse interests in Norman, a lot of diverse areas in Norman. Unfortunately, because of the population spread, it's impossible to get all of those interests in one ward that's contiguous and that is equal in populations. So the committee tried to form those boundaries in a way that made sense to the committee. There is more than one right answer, I'm certain. There are a lot of options here, and so you'll hear that, I think, from the public about other suggestions where those lines could be drawn, but these are the rules in front of you that would need to be followed regardless. State law says do not split precincts where possible, and our charter says that as well. The challenge, of course, is that they are also redrawing their boundaries, and they have not completed those new boundaries. So we don't know absolutely where those precincts will be. So the commission or the committee was provided with current precinct boundaries when looking at reapportionment. So this is the process to date. The committee was appointed in January of 2021. The data would normally, by federal law, come out, I think, in April, but because of COVID, it didn't come out until August, and the committee immediately started meeting a couple of weeks later. They had two regular meetings, came up with boundaries that were substantially equal in population, and took that forward to a public hearing on September 27th. After the public hearing, they met in a regular meeting and decided to move forward with the original recommendation, and now we're here tonight for the public hearing on that recommendation before council. Going forward, as I said, tonight, you'll have the option of adopting a resolution that doesn't change the boundaries, a resolution that would change the boundaries in the way the committee recommended, or a resolution adopting a change in boundaries however council sees fit tonight. That doesn't change the boundaries in and of itself. That resolution is required by our charter, but we do have to change boundaries by adoption of ordinances. And state law requires a 30-day published notice before an ordinance can be adopted. So that gives us first reading on December 14th, and then second and final reading on January 11th. We'll publish that 30 days' notice in advance of that consideration. Ordinances do not go into effect for 30 days after their date of adoption, so this ordinance would go into effect on February 10th and would not impact the current terms of council members or the 2022 council elections. And now I'll turn it over to Joyce Green, our GIS guru, who knows this mapping software better than I do.
All right, so I am going to present the map on behalf of the committee. We're just going to go through each ward and look at the changes. At the beginning of the process, the total deviation among the wards was 27.41%, which is well outside of the 10% needed to have our maps be valid. So the committee did need to undertake reapportionment. So at that point, I'm going, we used the total population, as Catherine said, to draw up this map. So the proposed ward, well, the starting population of Ward 1 was 15,018. The starting deviation was 6.16. It sent 23 people to Ward 5 and gained 1,088 from Ward 7 to have an ending population of 16,083 with an ending deviation of .5%. Ward 2 was one of our lower wards. It started with a population of 14,845. It had a starting deviation of negative 7.24. It received 1,912 people from Ward 8 for an ending population of 16,757 and an ending deviation of a positive 1.47. Ward 3 was also one that started out fairly low. It received, its initial population was 14,824. Its starting deviation was a negative 7.37. It sent 135 people to Ward 8 and received 2,254 from Ward 8. Its ending population was 16,943 with an ending deviation of 5.87. Ward 4 was our lowest ward. It started with a population of 14,129 and a starting deviation of 11.71. It received 11,54 people from Ward 7, 614 from Ward 8, and ended up with an ending population of 1,5897 with a negative, did I say wrong? 15,000, sorry, 15,897 and an ending deviation of negative .66. Ward 5, while it looks like it started out fairly well, it was really impacted by other moves. It has a starting population of 16,610 with a starting deviation of 3.79. It sent 1,294 people to Ward 6 and gained 23 from Ward 1 for an ending population of 15,339 and an ending deviation of negative 4.15. Ward 6 was one of our larger wards. It had a great deal of development over the last decade. It started out with a population of 18,515 and a starting deviation of positive 15.7. It gave 5268 people to Ward 8 and received 1,294 from Ward 5 and 803 from Ward 5 for an ending population of 15,344 and an ending deviation of negative 4.2. Ward 7 was also fairly high, and it basically gave up population to Ward 1 of 1,088 and to Ward 4 of 1,154 for an ending population of 16,000, 16,067 and an ending deviation of positive .4. And Ward 8 was changed a lot because it was bounded by a lot of wards that had really low populations, so it was the place where it was most logical to give population to, and that's also why it had to go so far over into Ward 6. So it had a starting population of 15,776 with a starting deviation of negative 1.42. It gave 1,912 people to Ward 2. It gave 2,254 people to Ward 3. It gave 614 people to Ward 4, gave 803 people to Ward 6, and took 135 from Ward 3 at 5,268 from Ward 6 for an ending population of 15,596 and a total ending deviation of negative .54 or negative, sorry, negative 2.54. So, so in the end, the total deviation in the plan was 10.02. And this is just a summary map that shows all of the changes.
Here for a minute. I did want to address, and I meant to address this earlier, some things that we heard at the prior public hearing that I wanted to clarify. I think several people said two or three council members would lose their, or would be moved out of ward by virtue of these recommendations, and that's not correct. Only one council member would be impacted. And of course, this doesn't impact current terms, and it won't impact the 2022 elections. The committee never received the addresses of council members. I, in fact, don't know where all of you live, so I did not know it impacted a council member until later in the reapportionment process, but we did not give them precinct results or anything like that. So it was really just a function of using this software that council will have an opportunity to look at as well and trying to get the numbers right.
Thank you. Okay. This is the opportunity for members of the public to make comments on this item. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. We do have public comments. We have some signed up. Madam Clerk, will you please start reading names?
The first one would be Michael Blanc.
Blanc, Ward 2.
You know, I just wanted to come and basically just explain that I looked over this earlier, and as a member of the public at large, I don't have any issues with the current changes. I feel they all make sense considering the general growth of population we've had. I know there's some concern around, you know, Ward 8 being impacted, but beyond that, as far as I can tell, at least from Ward 2, it seems fine for a change. In fact, I'm kind of actually surprised that with the growth we've had in Norman that we were able to keep the boundaries pretty much, I mean, things are changing, but I was kind of surprised that we were able to keep the population centers as consolidated as possible as we have. So personally, I think it's fine. I don't see any issues with it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Teresa Elam.
Hi, I'm Teresa, and I think you all know how I feel about it, but I just wanted to reiterate, I think Ward 5 showed up. I think Ward 5 is unhappy. None of us out there feel like we were listened to. When the committee went back, they immediately went to a vote. They didn't discuss it. They didn't consider any of our claims. You started out with Ward 6 and 7 that were way over and Ward 4 way under. I think the lines could have been changed with minimal impact to the way the wards currently were. And I want to also stress that your agricultural zoned wards definitely are a community. We feel strongly together. We're, we talk to each other, we support each other. And the other and last thing, point that I want to make, in the 2010 census, Ward 6 was 21% rural. And that number, I'm sure, is less than that before this proposed boundary. Ward 5 is 87%. We are a rural community, and I don't know, we're important. We're important to Norman, and we can benefit each other, and we just want to be heard.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Goodchild.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you tonight. Our charge, as you heard, is each ward should be formed of compact contiguous territories with boundaries drawn to reflect and respond to communities of common interest to the extent reasonably possible. Ward lines shall not create artificial corridors, which in effect separate voters from the ward to which they most naturally belong. I feel that this war, this new map, especially Ward 6 going out to Little River, is a corridor. This area is owned, zoned ag, and I feel that is a community of interest that was not listened to. I tried in every meeting for the residential area near, in Ward 5, near Highway 9, to be moved over to 1 or to 7 to see what the numbers were, and that was denied every time. I don't feel that we explored all the ways that that could be reflective of our charge that you heard tonight. 5 was at 3%, 8 was at 1.42. I am not sure why we moved so much stuff around that ended up diluting our farmland and our zoned ag. Our chair said that the ag community was not a community of interest, and I will disagree with that. Our ag community has different needs than core Norman. They're not better, they're just different. People in these areas, we have dumped pets that we cannot get animal control to come and take care of. We have people that have to own a tractor to grade their own road. We live with well water and septic system, and there are many people, particularly in Ward 5, that do not even have internet service. So that is a community of interest because we all have similar issues that I would like for the council to take into account because it was not heard in our meeting. Afterwards, we had a discussion after the public comments, and the chair immediately went and asked for a vote. I do not feel that the constituents in Ward 5, that their voices were heard. Why should they come to the council meeting and address if they weren't addressed by our committee? I just hope that the council goes and looks at some of the residential areas in Ward 5 that have been asked to be moved to a more residential neighborhood.
Thank you.
Tom Hackelman.
Tom Hackelman, I'm a resident of Ward 5. As you've already heard this evening, already a couple of times, Ward 5 consists of the salt of the earth portion of the city of Norman. We're great people, a great section of the community. While we don't necessarily argue the need for reapportionment, what we are concerned about most specifically is the process that was used. Consistently, the voices of Ward 5 are silenced and unheard. This has been a consistent problem before I even moved to Ward 5 or as I moved there. This was something I consistently heard from across the ward. The other thing is that when a significant plan was put before the committee that could help address the issues pertaining to Ward 5, that voice was once again silenced. And instead, the majority of that time speaking about Ward 5 was focused specifically on the dangerous council member on, for Ward 5 and how dangerous this person is to the city of Norman and specifically Ward 5. Our challenge and our concern is that while our voices continue to be unheard, this smacks of gerrymandering. This smacks of abuse of power, for lack of a better way of putting it. This was a hand-selected committee by the mayor to achieve a single purpose, to achieve the plans that she had in place to help restructure the lines and position this so that we would no longer have dangerous council members. The bottom line is votes matter. While I may not have voted for our council member, he is our council member. That's the bottom line. If you want a different candidate, if you want a different representative, select a better candidate and get out there and campaign correctly. This process did not work, and we need to revisit it. So I would urge the committee, urge the council, rather, to have the committee go back, revisit this plan, make sure that all the voices are heard, and that we have a good plan that makes sense for the city of Norman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fred Pope.
Pope, Ward 5, 1501 Navajo Road. Comrade Mayor and council members, I believe we have had a very bad problem for the last at least two years with Marxist influence promulgated and promoted by you, the mayor, through Black Lives Matter, Critical Race Theory, Jamil Kendi, and this whole reapportionment has been very sadly abused. It is as if, as the preceding speaker mentioned, you were trying, using the Marxist ideal that the end justifies the means, to use these nice straight lines to eliminate districts for two of the people who were elected with the help of Unite Norman, which was generally, as you know, also opposed to you. This, again, I would reflect what the previous gentleman said, this should be sent back to the committee for a redo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Logue.
I'm Maggie Logue. I live in Ward 5. I am pretty sure that all of you have already made your decision as to what you're going to vote for, for this reapportionment committee, the recommendations. It really disappoints me because what that says to me is that you all don't care what your constituents are saying, and that's a problem. I don't have a whole lot to say, but I want to point out a few things. In Ward 3, their potential voting is going to increase by 2,119 people. That's according to those numbers up on that map just above it. Ward 5 is down by 1,271. And Elizabeth Foreman, you might be interested in knowing that your ward is down by 3,171. What is the deal here? What are you all trying to do? I don't think this was done unbiased. I think it was a planned deal. I think there was gerrymandering involved, and I gave you that definition last month. And I'm sorry that I feel like nothing that I say is even heard from you all, especially Bria Clark. You're looking down at your papers. You never look up when someone talks. You just blow it off. That pisses me off.
Please watch your language, ma'am.
Excuse me?
Please watch your language, ma'am.
Please what?
Watch your language.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I will.
Thank you.
But you know what? You have been governing this city without any, any consideration of most people. You're trying to just represent a few, and I'm not okay with it. It's like, what are you doing? Anyway, I am obviously not against this. I think it needs to be redone. I think the committee needs to be reappointed with maybe some unbiased people that really want Norman to succeed and be successful, and I don't think you've, I don't think you've chosen the right people, and that's just my opinion. And Kelly, just to you personally, you have 2,100 more people to help you get reelected, and I hope you can do it because you know that we are not going to support you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Kendall.
Good evening, Norman City Council. My name is Jonathan Kendall, and I'm a current Ward 5 resident. I was blessed with the opportunity to move to Norman with my family, with my most set of, recent set of naval orders. Norman was my first choice. This was the first opportunity since I enlisted in 2001 to obtain a residence that felt like a home rather than just a temporary arrangement. My wife and I both grew up around livestock, and we were fortunate enough to find a home with land to share that same experience with our children. My oldest daughter is the current FFA president and 4H vice president. My two daughters are also involved with FFA and 4H. The opportunity has helped teach them many life lessons such as hard work, discipline, responsibility, caring for another life, and so much more. Despite additional work, they see tangible reward in showing their sheep, goats, rabbits, et cetera. I say this all to highlight the often overlooked gem of Norman, the agricultural community, which is absolutely a unique community characteristic aspect. Our city has an amazing diversity. That's all. With that said, if you speak to many Ward 5 residents, there is a pervasive feeling of being overlooked, undervalued, or our opinions just don't matter. This feeling has existed since I moved into the ward, and I understand that it existed long before my arrival. It was highlighted in the Stormwater discussions to where Ward 5 residents had to be loud in order to be heard, and once again came up to the forefront with the most recent reapportionment discussion. There have been a number of issues in recent time that have diminished the trust constituents have in this municipal body. In recent council member elections, we heard words such as renewed trust and transparency promised to constituents. Stormwater, senior center, recall, Norman Police Department budget, COVID relief fund budget, et cetera, have all served as, should have served as flags. That honesty, transparency, and the renewed confidence in this government body should have been a priority to every individual sitting upon the dais. This includes committees, committees whose recommendations affect all constituents. If these bodies are not open and transparent, you will not receive the trust you claim you desire. Most of us have heard recordings from the reapportionment meetings. It will be difficult to challenge, it will be a difficult challenge to convince me and many here that there wasn't political motivation involved in what is supposed to be a nonpartisan body. More specifically, the intentions of any council member should not be taken into account in the process of redistricting Norman's wards. Further, I have not committed over 20 years in serving this amazing country, protecting your rights, and upholding the U.S. Constitution for a member of that same committee to make a generalized statement about myself and my neighbors. There are racists and backwards people all over this community, every ward, every neighborhood. I've seen it in the military and strongly push against it, but it's a disservice to do so for Ward 5. If this body truly desires trust, then your actions should follow. This looks like making every effort to fulfill your duties in an honest and transparent manner, including committees. Those who'd erred in making a political process or racially motivated should respectfully step down. Lastly, if you truly want that desire and trust, then you could be informed or a variance to make it to where this council votes are revised to restart the process and ensure per the charter borders are equalized and reflect common interest.
Thank you. And it has been pointed out to me that though I didn't say it, comments should be directed to council as a whole and not directed to individual council members or myself.
Okay. Mark Wagner.
Good evening. I'm Mark Wagner from Ward 5. This entire reapportionment process should have been, could have been, and should have been very simple. Currently, only Wards 6 and 7 are outside the parameters of the committee as far as the plus or minus 5%. These two wards adjoined Wards 1, 2, and 4, which are low in their population and could easily handle the overages that remain, and still remain within the parameters. This action would bring the population of all of the wards closer to the mean instead of farther away from it. The first concern regarding the proposed reapportionment in the wards in Norman The first concern regarding the proposed reapportionment in the wards in Norman are the parameters. Plus or five, plus or minus 5% or 10% variance is huge. You're talking about 1,600 people. And in our elections, that can be a big thing. I still don't know where you get the 27% deviation because the largest was only about 18,000. So that's only about seven or eight percent. Well, I think 14 is what you said. Even with those excessively wide parameters, the committee violated their own instruction. The proposed population difference between the most and the least populous wards would be in excess of 10%. The largest of the proposed wards, Ward Three, gains and loses to the same ward. Why is that necessarily? That from Ward Eight. Similarly, Ward Seven both gains and loses to Ward Eight as well. If the goal is to equalize a population between these, this should be a necessary movement which is at best confusing and leads to questions about why it's necessary. Again, it's been, it's made way more complicated than it should be. This creates suspicion regarding the intent of the committee. A case could possibly be made that the excessive complicated moves are proposed in order to disguise one narrow definition of gerrymandering by trying to keep the ward boundaries more or less straight. Also puzzling is the largest percent deviation specifically in Ward Five, making it the least populous ward in the city. Due to the nature of Ward Five as the watershed for Norman and it being almost entirely rural, it makes no sense to slice off 11 square miles when the ward is already within the 5% variance as desired by the committee. The rural nature of the ward and agricultural zoning would tend to keep the population of Ward Five very stable compared to the rest of the city. It's hard to justify removing 1,294 rural residents and place them in an urbanized area when the ward was already within the desired population range. Comments from the committee regarding the rapid future growth for Ward Five indicate the committee is not realigning current population as they're, as they're told to do as much as trying to account for their unannounced plans for development in Ward Five.
Thank you.
Alex Torby.
Alex Torby, Ward Six. The recommendations from the reapportionment committee must be withdrawn and a new unbiased committee established. I believe this committee went into the first two meetings with a predetermined outcome as evident by the remarks that were captured on audio recording, which are a call to approve the ward boundary changes at the beginning of the meeting. Racist remarks by Ms. Turner about the residents in Ward Five and their council representative. Stormwater would finally pass if Ward Five is broken up. The 11 square miles added to Ward Six could be developed. None of these comments have anything to do with balancing resident population evenly between all the wards. It would make a lot more sense to add the rural portions of Ward Six into Ward Five because they would have common interest. Ward Five is, Ward Five is one of the things that makes Norman unique and special. The most egregious of all of this is that the city charter was not strictly followed. I would hope council would not approve the recommendations from this committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all that signed up ahead of time. However, since we did not have these posted online for online sign up, if anyone else would like to speak, you will also have an opportunity to share three minutes with us. Seeing none? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. Now closed.
Thank you. Item two is discussion and consideration of adoption of a resolution retaining or adjusting current ward boundaries in accordance with criteria in the charter and is set forth in U.S. Supreme Court and Oklahoma Supreme Court jurisprudence. Before I ask for a motion, I'd like to recognize Kathryn Walker to outline for council what we are required to do this evening under the charter language and state statute. Ms. Walker will walk them through three options.
Thank you. So, under the charter, our options tonight are to adopt a resolution retaining the current ward boundaries. As we stated in the staff memo and earlier today, that's not recommended because of the population deviation between the wards based on the 2020 census. Adopt a resolution, essentially adopting the reapportionment ad hoc committee's recommendation, or adopt a resolution adjusting the boundaries as you all see fit using the same criteria that we went through earlier, same criteria that is used by the reapportionment committee. Again, population equality being the prime consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilor Tornello for a motion.
I'm making a motion to adopt a resolution on mending the boundaries recommended by the reapportionment ad hoc committee.
Councilmembers, the motion on the floor is to amend the boundaries recommended by the reapportionment ad hoc committee. And I'd like to recognize Councilor Tornello again.
This question is directed to Mrs. Green. There are several choices that were presented. Can we start with the recommendations made by Mrs. Zorba from the last meeting? Go from there.
Mr. Zorba recommended that we move some area south of Highway Nine into Ward One. And then to equalize things, I believe he was suggesting. I can get this to move. Move this section of Ward One into Ward Six. And because it was cut off, this section of Ward One would have to be moved into Ward Five. So the thing to do now is look at the... What? This piece over here. Oh, yeah, that is what I'm trying to do. Thank you. I thought I had it on there. Sorry, folks. Oops, missed a little piece. Okay. So since Ward One is okay, from there you would basically incrementally, and he didn't really get this far in his suggestion, but you'd incrementally move things between Ward Five and Ward Six to get those within deviation. Hold on. Let me move this. Yes. So I think you would start doing that by moving the areas that were moved from Ward Five into Ward Six, back into Ward Five. So. We need to take a little bit more back in. It's pretty close.
No, 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 she needs to put it back.
Do I lose the north part of Six there?
It should go back to Ward Six. If you can go back to the boundaries that were, the current boundaries for Ward Five and Ward Six on 36 Streets.
On this area?
Yeah, so, so what I, what I was asking was, Mr. Zorba was suggesting it's a possibility to, to move, you're looking at his, what he asked for, but we need to move back into Ward Five, what was put in Ward Six, but also you cut off the north portion of Ward Six, all the way to Franklin. That should go back to Ward Six. Yeah.
Yeah, look at the numbers at the bottom. We need to get the total deviation amongst the ward at least to where it will round to 10%.
Okay.
Let's do a quick review of this and just check it. So this is going to, it's like... And right now it's failing the overall range test because it is, when you add 4.93 to 5.87, you're going to get a deviation greater than 10%.
Right. What happens if we put back that part of Ward Six that was put in Ward Five at the very top, back to Ward Six? How would it look with the new numbers?
That will make it worse, but we can look at it. Yeah, why is it not doing that?
I think they want...
Let's try it again. Let's go out. Set on Ward Six. Okay, there it took it. All right, so let's do the review of it again and check integrity. And it's failing the overall range check. And it's always going to fail the connectivity check because there's an island in Ward Four because of the university. So your overall range is over 11% in this case.
What if you took back the southern part of Ward Six? That blue part next to Five and...
It's a, it's the, yeah, so it's off, it's in Ward, it's in One.
Right now.
Lindsay and 36 and 48 Street back to Ward Six. Is it 24th and there six?
Which one?
Right there.
You want this one to go back to?
Yeah, if that's Ward Five, what would that do?
Okay. That's... Okay, so that makes Ward Six 12% under and Ward Five 6.99% over, which is...
That wasn't Ward One. Yeah, that was Ward One. So what, can we scroll up to see our new amount? Or a little?
Let me get rid of this connectivity.
I can't see what it is here.
That shouldn't be... Is that Porter? What if I got back Precinct 55 area? The, just west of Porter, north of Rock Creek? Right here.
Okay.
Back to Ward Six.
So Ward Six is down 7.30 and Ward Eight is down 7.44. So you will still fail the integrity check because the overall deviation range is going to be too great.
Okay.
She didn't, she didn't, you didn't get back Ward, you didn't get back.
That bunch of residents in it from Ward Six to Ward Five that was previously Ward One just has too many people in it. You have too many people now in Ward Five.
I know. Can we put that back in Ward One? Just saying. That square for 36 to 48 between Lindsay and Alameda. Can we...
What's that?
Great.
Councilmember Studley, are you asking to put that back in Ward One and see what the numbers would be?
Yes, please.
Okay, would, worth that and the, the population that was added to Five, from Five below there, it would be...
Give that little sliver back to Seven then. Yeah, but... Oh, that would make them...
The one off Platte then?
Yeah, that's 1,000 people.
I would love to have that.
It would be. I mean, it's going to look strange, but if, it could go into Ward Four.
Kathryn, I had a question.
Sure.
So, part of the issue here is that some of the wards, as they exist, are completely developed out.
Right?
And some of the wards have already significant, a significant number of Platts that have been approved. Specifically, southeast area of Highway 77, which would be the southwest corner of Ward Five. So Walmart and The Links, there's a massive development that was approved seven years, six, seven years ago by this council called Destin Landing, which is five, six square miles. And it's a 30-year development. That was approved by the council six years ago. I voted against it, but it passed five to four. So, does the, do these maps have to anticipate how much deviation may, may take place over the next 10 years of population growth?
We certainly tried to. The committee was provided maps that showed Platts that have been approved because you want these numbers ideally to be good for 10 years until the next census. And so you don't want the wards to get so far apart in the next 10 years that you have to do this again and then change it again in 2030. So they did look at that, and that was considered. And that is really why I think the committee started where it did. It started sort of in core Norman where it was already built out because you knew those numbers weren't going to get a lot bigger and then moved kind of around clockwise from there. But that is... But that is something they considered.
That's one of the points that I was initially confused about and till Councilmember Schuler and I discussed it was that, you know, for my ward, I'm losing two, over two thousand people. I'm not gaining. I'm the only ward not gaining any space at all. I'm gaining no people. And that's in large part in my understanding because ward seven, I have a lot of houses under development. I've had several large apartment complexes built in my ward, potentially more coming in the near, in the future. There's one apartment complex that we've approved in ward seven that hasn't been built yet on South Highway seventy-seven near Post Oak. And so that led me to understand that part of this equation was how much each ward might have potential to grow over the next ten years and some of them, based on Platts that have already been approved and based on where they are in proximity to the urban area, have a lot of potential to grow over the next ten years. Whereas others don't have really any potential to grow as that.
Absolutely, and, and you still have to stay within that ten percent deviation based on current numbers. But that might be a reason why you would keep a growing ward a little on the low end in that deviation, knowing that in the next ten years they're likely to grow. And so just trying to keep them within that ten percent now and for the next ten years. But using current numbers only to, to really compare.
But Destin's Landing, Destin Landing could potentially add several thousand new residents to ward five over the next decade or two, depending on how quickly that's.
Depending on how quickly and how they phase it.
Right. Whereas ward two and ward three, ward two is completely developed out. It's landlocked and has the river on the south side. Ward three is completely developed out and has the flood plain and the river on the west. And ward four is completely developed out with the exception that we are starting to see high, higher density, taller buildings, things like that, which are kind of an X factor for growth in ward four. Cause you know, if the center, center city plan works out the way we hope it does over the next fifteen years, ward four might see some potential population growth as well.
Yeah, and those aren't necessarily coming as Platts, so.
Right, those are just any time.
Not activity.
And so part of it too, I know a lot of discussion has been made about the, the twelve, is it? Eleven square miles of ward five that would be added to ward six. But from my understanding of current development policy, referring to the one house per ten acre rule, only four square miles of this potential would be able to be developed. Because Forty-Eighth Avenue is the cutoff on the, on the east, cannot build one, more than one house per ten acre east of Forty-Eighth. You also cannot build more than one house per ten acre north of Franklin Road. So on this map, there's actually only four, I say only, I would love for this, all of that to stay rural, but there are four square miles identified out of the eleven under our current policies that would allow for some sort of urbanized development, but the rest would remain rural under our existing development policies. Am I correct about that?
Correct, yeah, and we talked about that. I think there was fear among some that if you have, if you're moved into an urban ward and you have representation that is focused on urban interests, that that policy could change.
I got a question, uh, just for clarif- I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, yeah, I'm done.
Clarification on Destin Landing here. So you said it was approved by council six years ago. Have all the Platts been developed in Destin Landing, Ms. Walker?
No, no, none of the Platts have been developed yet. I do believe they're working on the first piece of that coming in the next few months.
You know, when, here's my issue and the, the issue that ward five looks at. When they're looking at potential future growth, you know, we just saw a couple of weeks ago with Eagle Cliff where, you know, that growth was stunted and, and, and not approved. So we don't know what the council is gonna do going next year, next year after this. So that's the issue is that if we, if we project based on future growth, and this process, you know, quite frankly, should have taken a longer process over time, looking at the numbers, back and readjusting. But with only three or four meetings, in the last meeting, when they were asked, you know, they, they kind of rushed into it for a vote. My only concern going forward is that, you know, it's hard to plan on future growth because things change. Things can be voted out and, you know, we would love to keep growth, but as we've seen so far, they can vote growth down. I don't know what we can do tonight to go forward. You know, talking to previous members of the last reapportionment committee, they would take slivers and slivers and, and meet more than three or four times to look at the map and have public input and, you know, make it transparent so we don't have to be in a position where we're at today and we have to question the committee's motives here. That should never have come to this point. I don't know, like I said, there's, there's a lot of boundaries we can move tonight, but do we have all night to do this is the question. Alright, to make it fair for everyone. But I don't think future growth should be the main criteria and we should keep like areas together. And I understand the concept that if rural areas move into an urban area where they still receive, you know, representation, that's debatable. It's, you know, I'm not gonna question the motives of my council members here, but that's not what people want. They want transparency going forward, every meeting and every move they made. And I think there's, there's a lot more room we can, we can use to, to maneuver and get these numbers where we need to to meet the parameters as outlined by the charter and the instructions, to make everyone happy. Like I said, I don't know how much time we have tonight on, on this, but making the changes here, like moving ward six and ward one down south. We made the changes and Mr. Zorba had some, some proposals here and Mrs. Goodchild had some proposals too as well that weren't listened to. And I just think we're in a precarious situation where if we rush this tonight, what happens, you know, next year and, and the next ten years could impact the wards going forward. Ward five has been asking for representation and we have been ignored by the members who've lived there. And all they're asking for is that the shot and, and the process is fair and transparent and not rushed. So that's just what I gotta say right now. Any other suggestions, Ms. Green, that was proposed during this process of the meetings?
No, I think we did the one, I mean, and you would.
Just the one?
That's the only one that I remember that was not actually necessarily done to its full, you know, full fruition. And to make that one work, you would have to take more of ward six back into five, so. So you will have to.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, you can make, I mean, there were, there were no others, there were many suggestions and much like you found out tonight, many of them did not work. So they went down probably five, ten, fifteen even, different paths, many of which did not work. I know at one point we had a great deal of ward five and ward seven, but that did not work. So there were many paths that were gone down, but as you see, it's hard to make the numbers balance.
No, I understand and I appreciate the work you've done. It's just that, you know, after four meetings, actually they made the decision at the second meeting and that's, that's what was, you know, seen and listened to. I'm just saying tonight, I don't, I don't think we have the time to do it tonight to make it fair and transparent. It's, the question is, talking to the previous members of the reapportionment committee from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, they explained every move and they published every move and why they did it. I just feel that ward five members didn't see that. Even the ward five representative, Mrs. Goodchild, claimed many times that she asked to do and look at something different and she was denied. You know, so that is an issue when it comes to equal representation of the law and, and of the census numbers here, that we look at the census numbers here and do the best we can if it takes, you know, six or seven meetings to do this and it's for transparency's sake. I don't think we have the time to, to look at this thoroughly tonight and that's the issue because we have to make a decision. I don't wanna keep everyone here all night either because that's not my, my issue either. But again, if, if, if the committee had followed the recommendations, at least talked to the old reapportionment committee members for best practices, they could have given them some pointers and as far as I know, his hearsay that they never asked, they were never asked to, to come back and help with this new reapportionment with the new census numbers here. So that's an issue with me and ward five and that's where I stand right now.
Thank you. Councilman Foreman?
So I think it's really unfortunate that we're in this position that we're in and this has become a very contentious topic. I did wanna note that we were asked to give a recommendation from each ward, all the council members, and my appointee was Mike Zorba and he's here tonight. And on the last votes, when they were voting to recommend, he voted against because they did not further look into more boundary changes and I'm really glad he voted that way because I would have refused to vote for it as well for those very reasons. A lot of the things that I was gonna ask Ms. Hettins, we've kind of already touched on about council member Holman, talking about forty-eighth is the line we can't develop. So whether it's in five or six, we can still develop that regardless and that would be dependent on the property owner if they wanted to do that. But it's only seven thirty and I'd really like to give this a go. So could we readjust the lines some more? What if six went out to forty-eighth? In one or two pla- I mean, I don't, I don't know how this is gonna work. One is off. Could I consume more of ward eight? Because I am a council member who does make decisions heavily based on the public opinion and when there's large protests, I usually listen to that. I've done that with my ward and I'm willing to do that with potential future constituents and even the residents of ward five. So however we can make this work, that makes the numbers work and the residents happy, we need to find that sweet spot.
What if we go around, because it seems like whenever I was watching those reappointment committees, it seems like you guys were trying to go counterclockwise. So what if instead of doing that, we start going clockwise? So we look at seven and take that from mine, that little sliver, give it back to seven and then just kind of go around that way to try to even them out clockwise. Does that make sense?
Whatever we have to do. I'm, I'm fine with looking at anything.
I'm down to looking, looking at it as well. I think that it's important that if our, if our constituents want to look at this, that we do look at this and give it a good effort. I'm with you. It's only seven thirty. We've been here late into the night listening to all kinds of stuff. So I think that this shouldn't bother us too much to stay a little bit later and work on this.
This is like noon time.
Take a break first and then go, but I'm agreeing, I agree with you. Councilwoman for ward one, if, if you guys wanna stay and look at the numbers again, we'll stay as long as we can.
Well, your motion's to amend and so that's where we're at, so we're not postponing it. But I would really like to push through and try to get this together. The opinions of the public are not gonna change. This is your feelings and so we need to do the best that we can to make this work.
I agree on that.
That was actually in ward seven that you're putting in ward four right now. No, she's moving this that was moved to here into ward four. Ah, I see. If we're doing a, sticking to straight lines, then stick to the straight line.
Yeah, but we can't because of, look, we're already under.
Right, but we're gonna be moving this way. We're gonna touch every ward to try to adjust it.
So the issue I've had with the triangle here in ward seven is that over the last four census and reapportionment processes, this little triangle here, bound between Classen, Twelfth and Lindsey, has actually switched back and forth between ward one and ward seven every ten years. And so, you know, honestly, I've had no, zero ward seven residents have contacted me or reached out to me about this process. Except for the person that I appointed to the committee and I would just reiterate, the person on this committee representing ward seven is someone I appointed. You know, the mayor is the mayor and has the power to do what they do, but we all made, I mean, I say all of us that were on council at the beginning of the year, made recommendations for appointments. And I, the one that I chose was the one appointed for my ward. But I have expressed to him and others that my only real concern about the changes to ward seven was that that triangle keeps getting volleyed back and forth every ten years. And it would be nice to give those folks some sort of stability in the ward that they live in. But at the same time, when I look at this, making that change to put ward seven at seven point two percent, or seven point two, which doesn't give much room for any of the other wards to balance it out if I, if I get that section back as much as I'd like to.
All the way around.
So.
Is that what you all want to do? Go around, I mean.
Going the other way didn't work, so.
Can I, okay. So first of all, just point of clarification. I know that we're talking about anticipated growth and what's already been plotted and that we have considered that at the commission level. But I think what I heard Ms. Walker say is that this is all based on current numbers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the council might inform how, you know, whether or not you want them on, on the plus side of the deviation or the negative side, but it still has to be within ten percent between largest and smallest. And all of these numbers you're seeing and you're comparing are actual current population numbers based on the twenty twenty census, not on Platts.
So this is current, real-time numbers?
Yes.
And the deviation that we're supposed to stay within for what we're considering right now?
Right.
So just a couple of comments. Again, I want to say publicly that we were all invited to nominate a person from our ward to represent our ward. And I think we all in good faith nominated someone who we felt could come to the table and be neutral and consider the parameters that they were instructed to work under with the primary one. Again, point of clarification, equalizing population.
Correct.
That's the number one goal.
Yes.
And then everything else is a subset under that.
Right.
Okay, so I want to just reiterate that all of the work that we do as a council, as a board, as a commission, these are public meetings. They are noticed. Everyone knows that these meetings are happening. They have an agenda. And, you know, I can't really sit and judge about how many meetings it would take to get it right. But apparently the majority of the commission felt like they had taken the opportunity to use the software as manipulated by Ms. Green to explore multiple options. So again, you know, we made the conscious decision according to our charter and state statute to turn this over to what I think we all thought we were doing was an impartial, neutral commission. And with the goal of not necessarily putting it back in the hands of the city council. So just saying, that's where we are right now and yes, we do hear you and we are listening to you. And I am prepared to stay here as long as it takes tonight to manipulate these maps because you took the time and the energy to come here, so you are the most invested in the outcome. And I don't see any reason to not try for at least the next hour or so to move this around and maybe it will help enlighten everyone as to what the difficulty is and why there was some, you know, dissent on the committee to getting it right. So, you know, we have Mr. Zorba here who represents ward six. We have Ms. Goodchild. I think she's still here. Are you still here? Oh, she left, okay. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take all that into consideration and we're here, we're all present. We have the expert right here that can, you know, use the software so you can see it in real time for yourself. And perhaps we can get somewhere. You know, the other thing that I think is interesting just on what I'm hearing, the feedback that I'm hearing from those that are here tonight and those that I've heard from, and again, I've heard from no one in ward four, so they're happy with the outcome, I'm assuming. And, you know, I think it's interesting that there's a suggestion to put it back into a commission that I'm also hearing you don't have confidence in. So is that even an option to take it back to the commission or is it really in our hands now?
It's in your hands now. The, the language in the charter now, as I said, is new. Previously, we had a standing committee that met once a year to look at development data and during the charter, or I'm sorry, during the census, when the data came out, they'd start meeting about that and, and they really controlled what got presented. they'd start meeting about that, and, and they really controlled what got presented to council, and council's options were to either accept it or not. Uh, this is the first time that you all have had this option to, to change the boundaries, and what we're finding is the timeline in the charter is pretty compressed for this exercise. Um, you get thirty days from the date the reapportionment committee, uh, makes their recommendation, um, to come up with some solution, whether that's adopt their resolution or their recommendation, or to come up with your own. Uh, and so we do need to do that, uh, within that thirty-day timeframe, timeframe. It will still come forward to you all as an ordinance, and under state law, it will require two-thirds majority vote to be successful. So it's important that, that tonight we get some consensus.
Well, in my mind, um, this is the purpose of a public hearing. We're hearing from the public, and, um, now we have an amendment, uh, we have a motion on the floor to amend it, and here we are, and here's Ms. Green, and I think we invest some time and see if we can make any progress, and see how easy or how hard it is. Um, the other thing I, was just another point of clarification. Ms. Green manages all of our GIS information for the city of Norman. Um, you look at this kind of data and these kind of maps all day, every day. So if there's anything that you see that seems obvious to move around, I would welcome your input.
Councilmember Schuler.
Um, yes. So I have a couple of points that I want to make before we move, um, forward with, uh, this process. Some of them echo, um, what Councilmember Hall just stated. Um, I think what we're seeing here tonight is, um, a new, slightly new process with council being able to, um, manipulate the, the boundaries after our committee or our commission has, uh, given us a, a map. Um, and so I think that, one, I think that it's really important when we think about looking at reapportionment and how we're drawing maps and boundaries, that the process is transparent because we have public hearings, because our, our committees are open to the public, because our councilmembers asked, were asked, and were given recommendations to the mayor to appoint members from their ward. Um, I think that some of the rub is that with transparency comes, um, some misunderstanding, some clarification that needs to be, um, processed and understood, and I think maybe that's where we missed the mark, um, is really explaining what this process was going to look like and should look like from the beginning. So I have confidence that the committee did look at a lot of different things. Um, but what we are also hearing from the public is that you don't feel heard, that you have, um, expressed, um, specifically certain wards do not feel like their interests are being represented or heard, or that they may be diluted in the process because of, uh, these new maps. And I think that, um, I'm, I'm slightly concerned about this now being in the hands of council, and I want to make sure that the members of council really, that we stay focused on the task at hand, that we really think about the numbers, and it really just be about population and keeping our maps contiguous, um, and that it does not deviate in any way, shape, or form into anything else, any other parameters outside of what does the population look like? Are we keeping, um, interests together like our agricultural community, our rural residents? Right, and making sure that they feel, um, that they have been heard through this process. I think that, um, we're in a unique situation. While I, I don't think that council should necessarily be the ones that are manipulating the final maps, um, here we are because of this condensed timeline, because of the pandemic, because of getting the census numbers back, um, so late from the Census Bureau. Um, and I think that to do our due diligence, to make sure that our residents feel heard, and that we look at every possibility to make sure, um, that these maps are right for the next ten years for our community, um, that we give you our time because that's what we signed up for. We signed up to, to listen, to, to talk through this. Um, and if ultimately, you know, the same map is what we end up on, that's what we did our due diligence to make sure that we got to that. With, with all of the different mapping, with all of the different move this here, move that to this ward, um, to make sure that people feel represented and heard. Um, so I hope that through this process, um, we can figure that out, but let's stay on task with numbers, boundaries. Um, and I would request a break before we, um, jump into all of that because I think we may be here a little bit, so, with that.
We have several more comments.
After the comments, before we start.
Councilmember Studley.
Um, I just wanted to ask if, once we start this, instead of starting from this map that was already moved around, can we start with our current wards, how they are, and let us kind of manipulate it from how it is right now versus trying to manipulate this new one?
Yeah, I can pull that up and you can watch it.
Okay. I think that would be easier for all of us to start with, yeah.
All right, I think that was our last comment, so let's take a five-minute break. So we will go back to what the committee or the commission has recommended.
Why, why are we not starting? Why do we? So we go over the numbers of where we're starting from, so we can kind of reenact what they did? Do you know, in a different way that we can do this?
I think the comments that were received...
I think the comments that were received during break were that if... A lot of the other wards are not that far off of deviation, so maybe if you can just take slivers of the ones that are really far, you won't have to start all over, and you can get there faster.
But you could get there the same like the gentleman, I don't know who stood up, but they were talking about the wards that are highly populated, like Ward 6.
Both have over 18,000, and they're connected to some of the wards that are under 15,000, so why not just move from there?
I think that's what she's gonna do.
On the original map, though. Can we vote? I mean, we are a council. Can we decide of how we would like to do this?
Sure.
So, I was under pressure to start over again, and take slivers from 6 and 7 and see where we land on deviation numbers.
So then what was the point of having a committee at all? If we're going to start completely over?
Well, that's the point of being a council, is that we don't have to take their recommendation. We can do whatever we kind of want with it.
And if we... All right, all right, all right, all right. If we thought it was political before, it's certainly going to be political now. Let's start over. Please give us the beginning map, and we'll start with these suggestions.
And I just want to state that the... Wait till I get your mic on before you talk, because nobody at home can hear anything you're saying. Okay, Joyce, take it away.
Okay, somebody make the initial suggestion of what they want to move.
But if we're just looking at...
Numbers. If we're looking at Ward 7 and Ward 6, which both have over 18, and then the lowest wards are 4 and 2, how do those connect to 6 and 7?
Well, 2...
So 4 and 2 being the lowest, and 6 and 7 being the highest.
So 2 has a boundary with Ward 2 down here along the river basically in Highway 9, and 4 has a boundary with 6 up here.
So how do you guys want to do that? 6?
Changing... Doing that's going to drastically alter the character of Ward 7 or Ward 4. If you add a section of Ward 6, which is very suburban, to the older urban Ward 4, that's a change in character. If you remove the whole university from Ward 7 and add a large part of suburban Ward 5, that's a massive change in character to my ward. So I don't see how you could lop off the top of my ward and add more of it to the south to either Ward 5 or Ward 2 without significantly altering the character of Ward 7.
If you've looked... Well, no, because that's rural in too.
In the part of Ward 7 that borders Ward 2, there's actually nobody that lives in that part of Ward 7. That's the wastewater treatment plant and Lloyd Noble Center.
That's what I was just looking at.
So Ms. Walker, to clarify, the maintaining communities of interest is something we should shoot for, but population equality is our number one priority.
Yes, if you can't reach population equality exactly, it should be because of a community of common interest, those things, but population equality is number one, and those other considerations come into play as you decide your deviations within 10 percent. You cannot go over that 10 percent.
Thank you.
Joyce, do you have any suggestions?
We have a suggestion.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Okay, so on the original map, if you were to take 36 to 60th north of Franklin, Indian Hills, and give that to me, to Ward 6...
So we are wanting to add... We need to take away from Ward 6?
Yes, because you're over.
Oh. Oh, 24 to 36, give that to 5. North.
Okay, so you're talking 24th to 36 north of Franklin to 5?
Yeah, so those two upper right squares.
Yes.
That is... That's the old map. That's where.
Is that where you are? You're not there.
Where we are.
All right, what does that do for us?
Come on, why did she not go?
I don't know.
Come on, see if we can do it. Come on. I'm just looking at truly population. I don't give a shit about... Come on, I am on Ward 5. Because there's no way... This is hard for me to look at because it's not what we currently have.
Okay. So, let's see, Ward 6, that didn't really do much to Ward 6.
Yeah, you're way over.
Gave up to 4 or 8? Like, south of Robinson?
Ms. Green, can you go backwards from out just a bit?
Yeah.
All your mics are hot, by the way, so everything you're saying is going out live. The only way I can capture your comments because you're talking without your mic on.
So which part do you want to move into Ward 4?
Okay, I got to see this. Up here, so Robinson between East 24th and 12th down to Alameda. Yeah, right there. What if I gave that up to 4? Not that I want to lose you, Ward 6. Well, that should bring me down. Right?
Mm-hmm, hopefully.
We're going to put G.I. over.
I guess so.
Okay.
See?
Okay.
Not bad.
We're getting somewhere. Yeah, we got to fix. Okay, and then...
Hold on, I missed a couple.
Do we go back to the proposal for 7, 2, and 3, and 8? Or do we take issue with that? Ward Kelly, did he block out?
What about that little gap that's in between 2 and 7 that's part of 4? Can you give that to 2 to increase 2's population now?
Which street?
In between 7 and 2, there's that street, there's that piece, that block that goes down for Ward 4. What if you gave that to Ward 2?
Pickard and Berry.
Okay.
Are you talking about this piece here?
Yes.
To Talklin Berry, but that's what she's talking about.
Okay, so...
We got the 7.
There you go.
So we got to give some of 7 to 1?
Councilman Hall, what do you look... So do you have any input on just what sliver you want to move around from 7 to 1 just to kind of equalize?
Yeah, because that has 1,088 in it.
So take that little triangle area and move it into Ward 1. 16, 16, 16.
Okay.
Deviation.
So now we got to do 3. But 1's still...
Where's Councilman Lynn?
I don't know.
I think he ran to the restroom.
Okay. So...
All right.
Do we take... What is that?
1 is a little bit high, but...
What's that, southern part of Ward 3?
Now you need...
Go good north, Ms. Green, or up?
The river.
So is the goal to... I'm going to wait.
Well, we're doing a good job. We're at to kind of equalize the population. I mean, right now, it's... We're doing a phenomenal job. I'd like to have Councilman Lynn's inputs onto Ward 3.
So is the goal to maintain the status quo in Ward 5?
The God think the goal is to equalize the population, looking at a different view. A different view, and that's what we're doing now, is to... We started over with the original map, and we just made microsurgery moves.
No, you have not made microsurgery moves.
The numbers look fine. Everything is starting to equalize, and this is just another option to look at.
I'm willing to look at it.
We're just looking at it right now.
What's your issue, Councilmember Hall?
My issue is that I am comfortable taking the work, the three meetings of work that the commission did, and as you were suggesting, Councilmember Tortorello, to do slivers here and there with the people who are protesting, which is Ward 5. I have not heard anything from Ward 4. Now we are talking about drastically changing what Ward 4 looks like, and we have no opportunity to have input. So if we're trying to address the people who have come to protest and what you're trying to accomplish, I think we should be starting with what was recommended to us and see if we can make incremental micro changes, as you're suggesting, instead of starting over.
Well, I thought we all wanted to start over.
No.
That was a consensus over that we wanted to start over.
No.
That was not a consensus.
So, I mean, we started over, and we're looking at the map, and I'd like to see how far this goes on this iteration. I understand your concerns. I thought we all voted, or at least had a consensus, to start over with the original map.
No.
I think it was half and half.
We didn't...
This one and half.
Well, Councilman, you know, Studley had requested we start over again. So, you know, I agree with her that it was half and half, and so let's just finish what we have now and compare it, and then go from there. I understand your concerns.
We could do this, and then take the one that the committee also did, and kind of do some slivers from that, and then look at the two together.
That's a plan.
Because this hasn't been very long, and we're almost through here.
I think Councilmember Hall's point about our residents thought we were going to do something tonight, and now it looks completely different than what we've been relying on this entire time, and nobody has any notice.
Are we able to do another public hearing after this?
This is where the charter timeline gets really compressed with this new process. It gives you 30 days from the date of the committee's recommendation to adopt a resolution, either keeping the boundaries as is, adopting their recommendation, or changing them. There will be an opportunity for public notice, and we'll have a public hearing when the ordinance comes forward on second reading. And so there will be an opportunity for that, but that won't be until the date of the ordinance adoption.
And what if, for some reason, with that public notice and that public hearing, it doesn't pass because it requires a 2/3s vote, and now, instead of one ward being upset, we have seven wards being upset?
If it doesn't pass, we would, I would assume, go back to the drawing board. There's not a... There's not a timeframe for the council adoption. It's just of the ordinance. It's just this resolution. So it's a little funky, but we're just trying to work with the language with what we have. State law doesn't say a particular timeline. It says a reasonable amount of time. And, you know, if you look across the state, that means different things in different cities, and so I think we're still being reasonable at that point.
Well, that's helpful, I think. It's not some drop dead deadline to have the process completed. It's just we have a timeline for this specific recommendation.
For the resolution, and the resolution's going to inform, you know, the ordinance that we draft. Whatever you guys adopt tonight, that's how we'll work on the ordinance, and Joyce has to put in the legal, you know, boundaries of each ward into that ordinance. So it's challenging to adopt or amend on the floor. So if you get to that point, and Janie Wery, we would probably say postpone and let us draft and give you another opportunity to vote on.
Does the resolution require 2/3s vote?
No, it's just to adopt the boundaries, but ideally, you know, we'd like 2/3s votes on the resolution so we know that what we're drafting for council's adoption ultimately is something that would pass.
Oh, Councilmember Lynn has returned.
We weren't waiting on you?
Surely not.
Yeah, actually, we have.
Actually, yes. Why don't we proceed with this, finish this iteration, and then continue discussion?
Okay, so what do you want to add to Ward 3?
She can't see that.
That's what you have. Ward 3 is pretty big, so it's hard to...
You can try that little sliver.
Precinct 76, which is what was added.
Yes.
That little sliver right there.
Okay. So, again, that's too much, so you have to start taking something out of 3 to make that work.
How much is it too much?
It is 6.7 percent.
And then Ward 8?
Positive. So you need to leave, lose at least a percent and a half or so.
And then...
Yeah, too small. 3,000 short.
And if you take away that part that is proposed, even though I have had some pushback on that.
So do you want me to move this back into 8?
I mean, does that get it where it needs to be? Because that's what's proposed, taking that.
I think it should get it close. Let's...
Yeah, I thought it was only 187 people, something along those lines.
Why can't that not go? 8 selected. I don't know. The softwares are always a little touchy. Okay, so... Well, back 3... Ward 3 is back where it more or less started. However, Ward 8 is very negative. So we need to add to Ward 8.
I mean, it is what it is. We post appropriately. You don't have to post. So Ward 8's going to have to take part of 6 or 2 or something.
Yes.
So what if they came in at 6 and then I came in at 5?
There's two.
What part do you wanna give to Ward eight? That part?
Yes, where do you want to move eight?
And here's the cadundrum, and this is why they hit the wall.
Okay. Um. Okay, where Ward six is on the north, what if to the west, I gave that to eight, and then on the east, I took from five?
Okay, so where on the?
Right there.
This?
Really?
Right.
Everyone.
Did you hear that? That, this part here was given to eight, but we can give slivers and see what the number's like. Is, he is under thirteen thousand, and moving this back might bring him up to be more equal with everyone.
Okay, so now Ward eight's too big.
Good God. Taking five.
That puts you under eleven thousand.
What if we're doing three full blocks? You did two.
Yeah, let's take.
What about just?
Yeah, I'm gonna take part of it back. I'm gonna start with taking this back to six, and then we can do it.
Like, these two areas here, and see where the numbers go. This is where the concentration, which is giving him the extra numbers and taking from her. So, what about go back and give this to Ward eight? You keep this for now, and see what the numbers look like. Yeah.
That's fine, that's the only one I want.
That's still negative. Now I have both.
That's five.
Ms. Green, Ms. Green, will she hear us?
Uh, what about giving precinct fifty-five to eight?
That's.
Well, you need to give, you're, you're under now.
Oh, I'm under now?
Well, you're at fourteen thousand.
I know. We might just need to go back to the proposed map.
Do we really think we're gonna sit up here and change and make a better decision than a committee that met multiple times and spent hours talking about this? Are we gonna do this on the fly and make a better decision than?
Second that.
We're running around in circles here, literally.
I think it's important to show the public, though, even when, when we're trying, how difficult this is, and how hard they had to work to get the population to where it was as even as it was. And not everyone is going to be happy, as we can all tell, just with us as council. But I think it's important to at least try and show, show and tell game.
Yeah, I am. It's just not working.
I feel like if anything, Joyce is gonna get a better mouth out of this.
Yes. All of these softwares have, it's, it's the quirkiness of software.
I do feel like, at this point, we just need to go back to the proposed map and start there, cause we've tried going this way, and it's getting real funky.
Yeah.
So, maybe, Joyce, I appreciate all your clicking, I really do, but maybe, now that we've tried that, it's not gonna work. So, let's go back to the proposed map and start shaving, little by little.
Okay. Okay, so we're back at the beginning of the plan.
What if I give east of forty-eighth back to Ward five? What does that do? So, that's sixtieth, and then that little block is seventy-second.
Okay, say that one again.
Um, east of forty-eighth, from Franklin down to Alameda, and then over back to Ward five. And I'd just like to say, if this is what we do, like Councilmember Holman said earlier, whether thirty-six to forty-eighth is in Ward five or Ward six, that is still land that could be developed. East forty-eighth is where not so much. It's very specific. Okay, so that just.
Yeah, well, it is, you know, right now, it's, um, you need to take some back from Ward. Let's see, what is?
Which part? Which squares? Me? Right here? Okay, what is that? Okay, what, above Franklin, right there, those two squares up top, um, what is that?
What, up here Franklin and?
Sixtieth.
And seventy-second?
Or maybe just one at first, and then? Or maybe those, those two.
So, you're wanting to take those back?
Yeah.
Okay. That didn't change much. There's, the reason it is such a large area is because there are very few people in it.
What about the square below? Oh, God, okay.
That's so annoying.
The next square below?
I don't know, Rashar, what do you think?
Can you take them from eight?
Could I take from eight?
The reason I ask, because, uh, the streets that were south of Robinson, um, those are the only streets in Ward eight that have been part of Ward eight since the Ward boundaries were created originally, so, uh, from a historical perspective, perspective, I'd love to see those put back in, and if that means having to give up, um, what a precinct fifty-five is what that looks like, then.
So, you're wanting precinct fifty-five to six?
Can you repeat that? Where, where do you want it?
Uh, basically, give precinct fifty-five to, to six, which would be Porter to twelfth, uh, north of Tuxedo. And then give back to eight, um, the streets south of Robinson, which would be, oh, I can't tell the street names on here.
Yeah. Okay, so now you're low, so you want to take?
You wanna take back my southernmost?
Well, he wants to take that other.
The southeast, which corner?
This piece back.
No, yeah, right there where Westwood Golf Course is.
Does it go? Is this proposed go? So, you're wanting to take this piece here back?
Yes.
Not exactly certain where we were. Well, actually, let me go over here, cause I can't.
Yeah, if you could make it a little stronger.
Bravo.
That was. Wait, how did we get?
I think you're wanting to get back to that.
How do we get, how do we get back to that?
Matt wanted to take this back into his ward, cause they were always, that was always in Ward eight, and then he gave some of his to Ward six.
Back out.
I know.
So, then what are we doing with two?
Cause I couldn't see.
What did I do?
I put our wards on, so I can see what's going on.
Well, it has to be five, right?
It's under.
Under we are. So, what are we gonna do?
That was so close. It was so close.
Okay, so that one is, so Ward two's pretty much back to where it started, so what do you want to do with Ward two?
What do I?
Where can they?
Looking at me?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
What if? What if you take these houses that are right here and that are on this side of the golf course?
This is a whole precinct. It's already split in half. It's our, this is.
You really need the golf course, man.
It is.
I'm not kidding.
OU. So, you're gonna, you're gonna.
So, five, it's over twelve. We got a negative seven and a positive five.
So, it's split in half right now.
Right.
I mean, we could take pieces of this out into two and see if we could get there from here.
Yeah. Can we get that recommendation there?
Well, the precinct's already split.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I think they weren't taken away from four, they were just taken away from three. Yeah.
Really? Yeah.
What is that street that runs straight across there? I can't see it, but it, like, it kinda cuts the southern end of that Westwood Golf Park off, not there, in the middle. Oh, I see what you're doing. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, cause I want Westwood to go back over here.
See, like these.
That would be. Oh, that's Derry Manery looking.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's put that back.
That's problematic.
And then let me put this back over here.
We just like undo that?
Okay, so.
So.
Three's just a hair over.
Let's see what it looks like. So.
Where are we at here?
Let's do the review. I probably have missed some, so it's probably gonna.
Actually, you can follow up pretty good.
I can't see it now that it's there.
We got check marks. We got check.
I don't know why.
How do we feel about this?
That's impressive.
I don't know. Well, can we take the box off?
I mean, we got checks.
So, and my frustration was based on starting over and trying to redo the whole thing, so I just wanna make that clear.
I just. You had it fit, Councilmember Holman.
Exactly, because I don't think it was, I don't think it was the right thing to do to completely redo the whole thing like that, and we asked the committee of citizens to give them time. But I do agree with making adjustments to what they did.
And it's more in line with what the charter says anyways, for us to do anyway, so, I mean, the numbers do match, they do work. You guys are all in agreement.
Can, can we zoom in to two?
Can we zoom into the center part?
So, we could see what that looks like?
Are we serious? Which ward do you wanna focus on? Cause it's hard to.
Can we look at the five and six really fast?
No, that, I was asking to see two.
Oh. Well, thank you.
You think what?
There is two.
I mean.
To get these.
What does?
Cause this is a whole neighborhood, and then this is an apartment complex right there.
I mean, does that really make sense?
Cause this is how it was before, and it was always part of Ward. That's what, that's what Matt was talking about, is this golf course was always part of eight. And that was also part of eight.
If it makes the numbers work, why wouldn't it make sense?
It's five percent. Mrs.
It should've been hot, yeah.
Are we all hot? Mrs. Walker, looking at the current numbers here and the deviations, I think, are we within that, the deviation numbers?
Yes, the numbers are, are definitely within ten percent. They're improved, I think, even from what they were before. I think the concerns are about the piece on Robinson just south. I mean, it is an odd line, but it's not, uh, breaking up in the middle of a neighborhood street or something like that. That's something we watch out for. It is contiguous to the area north of Robinson. Um, so, you know, it's not a straight line, certainly, but historically, it has not been.
And the total deviation is seven point six five, if I'm looking at the right one.
So, I guess a concern to think about, maybe we don't need to, maybe the census ten years from now doesn't really matter, but having the wards that have the least potential for any growth that are already in law being a negative means that in ten years, those wards will be significantly out of alignment, and will have to be drastically adjusted ten years from now. So.
And one of.
It can be slightly adjusted now, but just keep in mind that ten years from now, these wards may be, have to be drastically adjusted because we, uh, you know, left the wards at the least likely growth essentially on the low.
And that is, under the charter, that's something that council could ask or appoint a reapportionment ad hoc committee to look at at any time with a unanimous vote. So, if you do see some of these plaques, we know are, are out there, but we aren't sure when they're gonna start developing. If we see a lot of that activity happening, that would be a good time to have council, um, appoint a committee to, to look at that again. Joyce's group prepares annual, um, development reports, so we have all of that data based on building permits and things like that to give us pretty good estimates, um, of what's going on in real time.
That was the way the old reapportionment committee did it. Um, they, they came every year to look at the new plat data and what was actually built, and, uh, they just made those changes year after year. Um, was there a reason why we went away from that plan?
Yeah, there was a lot of concern that the boundaries were changing too often, and so people didn't know what ward they were in, what, who they had to vote for, um, those kinda things, and so it's definitely a balancing act of making sure that you, you keep the, the wards equal over the next ten years, but also, um, don't get into a position where they're changing every year, because that makes it almost impossible to.
Right.
In terms of voter turnout.
Probably be good to do it every five, or to review it every five years.
That, that makes sense. I mean, I've, I've got, one of the members gave me their, the five years worth of data and how they made the changes every year. And, you know, that might be an option, Councilman Holman, to, to do it every five years and bring them back, and just to look and see where we need to change.
I do have a question about that, because if we're looking at, like, you're talking about growth, Ward eight potentially would be growing, Ward two's not gonna grow. Um, and I understand that you're wanting to keep that Westwood Park, but ju, I mean, is there a particular reason other than just the Westwood Golf?
Well, like I was saying, I mean, those, those streets right there, south of Robinson, are the only ones that have been in Ward eight since Ward eight was a thing. Uh, you know, you, you wa, look at the historical maps, and Ward eight went south down the Canadian River. It's brought, it's moved around a lot, but those, that little nexus of streets has always remained inward.
Are you talking about where Sherry and those streets are?
Exactly.
So, then the ones that are just to the south of the golf course, could you put those into Ward two to account for that ward not really growing, but Ward eight would grow?
I mean, I think it's a pretty minute change at this point. We could probably address it when that growth happens, but if it's.
I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna be really honest here, Matt. Where do you live?
In that area.
Okay, so then let's call it what it is. You don't wanna be voted out of your ward.
Yeah. I mean, it is, the thing I say about historical precedent, I mean, that is, that is true. Those streets have always been part of Ward eight, so I think remaining consistent in that, whether I live there or not, uh, is, is still the truth.
Right, but at this point, to me, it looks a little political, because we're talking about a, a, a point, a reappointment committee that did not know where you lived.
Right.
You know what I mean?
I threw it out there as a suggestion to make the numbers work, because it was always part of Ward eight. Um, it's not like I was trying to do anything malicious there.
Right, but those houses to the south of that golf course have not always been part of Ward eight. I understand Sherry and all that have, but those houses to the south of the golf course are fairly new in consideration of what Norman has been. Just throwing that out there. I don't wanna get accused. Just throwing that out there. I don't wanna get accused now of saying, we're voting so that Matt can stay in his ward.
Well, I, I think, um, Councilman Sutcliffe has a point. Um, instead of every five years, would you guys be okay, we're looking at the reapportionment, doing it the way they used to do it every one year, every, every year, to see for growth and make those changes on the fly? Um, they're not, they wouldn't be major changes according to what I've seen. Um, they would be small changes and wouldn't cause too much confusion with who and where they need to be and who they.
Yeah, but that's in the future. We're talking about now. We have to fix this tonight. So I just wanna make sure that whatever we're doing tonight is truly looking at population and not, where do we live? What's gonna work best for us in our next election? Like, those aren't things that we should even be considering.
So I do have the old ward maps and.
Hold on, Councilmember Hall.
Please.
Is what we're discussing currently, point of clarification, is this a charter change to talk, what we're saying is, oh, we can just look at it again in five years, or we can review everything? My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is the first time that the council has even had the ability to have this kind of discussion. And that was a charter change voted on by the people, correct? Or no?
We can, we can look at it whenever we want. We can't change it.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the charter used to, um, allow for an annual review or provide for an annual review by the reapportionment commission. Now, if you wanted to look at the boundaries and change them, um, between now and 2030, under the current language, it would require a unanimous vote of council and you can do that. And, and it's still going back to the reapportionment ad hoc committee and following a similar process.
So, if we wanted to review it in five years, we would have an ad hoc reapportionment committee?
Yes, if council wanted to do that by unanimous vote, they would appoint a reapportionment ad hoc committee that would look at that. If we wanted to go back to the prior way of doing things, it would require a charter change. And that was a standing committee, uh, that met every year and reviewed the data and made recommendations.
And I'm assuming that that was a charter review commission recommendation when it was taken to the voters the last time for this charter change.
Yes, in 2013.
Yeah. So, once again, I think we're losing sight here that we appointed representatives of our wards to a commission that recommended the map that we had in front of us at the beginning.
Well, mine didn't, so. Because it wasn't continued to be looked at. I mean, from my understanding from you, you met twice for like an hour and a half both times. And then that was it, right? I. So it's not like they spent hours and hours and hours poring over this. And as Catherine often reminds us, we don't always have to take recommendations, um, as scripture. So I think it's something to look at and to consider and then also take into account the work that was done. So I do think the right thing was going back to the proposed map, but. I don't, I don't know. I don't know how everybody loses with this one necessarily. I do understand people's concerns, but.
You know, but, you know, the same thing with, with the, the Ward six rep and the Ward five rep, they had the same concerns that they only spent a couple of hours looking at the maps and came to a proposed map. What we've done tonight is look at the proposed map and the numbers do work. They're within the deviations. And we have two members of the committee here this, right now, that can, you know, if we choose to ask their opinion, but it's to us because the charter says it's to us and we're making the decision. And to be quite frankly, you know, to be quite frank, we probably wouldn't have been here if it wasn't brought to my attention by Mrs., you know, my, my Ward five rep, that, um, they're looking at political issues and partisan issues and making these maps, um, and drawing lines. That's the whole reason where we're at today. And, and my objection was that, you know, when, when you call the elected person in that ward dangerous and has to be considered, what do you want me to think about? What do you want my ward to think about? You've heard them say this. And so they, they, they doubled down, which is okay, and they submitted the same map lines. The charter gives us the right to look at this, what they've done, and make these small changes. And I think what we've done is make those small changes. It does meet the parameters as outlined by the charter and there's the deviations is less than ten percent. And I think we all had input in this. We all, you know, we, we looked at it. We, we, we talked with fellow council members here with the wards attached and adjacent and bordering our wards. And we got to what they may have gotten to if they had spent more than two and a half hours looking at the map. That's all I'm saying is that they didn't have the, you know, the, 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 the hours in to look at everything. And in two and a half hours, we just changed it and modified it and amended to make all the numbers work. So I don't see what's wrong with this. So the numbers do work. The parameters for the deviation do work. The two committee members are nodding their heads that this works. So, I mean, so I don't see anything wrong with this process. All right, so I think what we did, we, we, we modified it. That's our right. We amended it. That was our right. And I think we're all in a happy place because all the numbers worked for us. And that's where we should've been. The numbers worked this way too as well. And I think, you know, it, it's just my, my, my two cents.
Ms. Walker, I have a procedural question. So if this is what we go with tonight, let's say we do, it goes into ordinance and we have the second public hearing in January, and again, all, maybe all three of the other wards come out, I don't know. Can we amend it then? Or do we have to have another thirty days?
You can amend it then. Um, there's not any case law that, that suggests that you would have to renotice another thirty days. Um, I think we would treat it like similar to like we do zoning items that get postponed. The meeting, uh, is publicly postponed and that provides notice. Um, so I don't think you would have to tack on another thirty days.
But it could be amended at that meeting.
Yes, it would be a challenge to, to draft the ordinance because it is legislative. I really would like to have the final language written out and not be amending it on the floor. It would be a challenge to do amended on the floor, but it, it could be done.
Understood. Thank you.
Can we?
Councilwoman Holman.
So just going to note, you know, we've only had a city council ward system, uh, since the seventies. And so there was not a ward boundary in nineteen seventy-one. So the earliest that Brenda was able to provide for me was nineteen eighty-one. I have nineteen ninety-one, ninety, two thousand one eleven. And I would just note, it's not necessarily a criteria, historical, you know, an area being historically in a ward. But just for clarification, I would note that Ward, that the neighborhood south of and including the golf course has always been in Ward eight. And before the two thousand eleven changes, it actually went all the way down to Main Street. So Ward eight went all the way to Main Street until two thousand eleven. So that area has historically been in Ward eight. Again, I don't know if that's necessarily criteria for keeping or subtracting an area, but just wanted to be clear about that historical pres, uh, precedent is, is accurate. Um, and just, uh, I don't know, I think I sent everybody all the, all the historic ward maps. They are very interesting how they've changed every ten years, uh, especially the nineteen eighty-one. It doesn't show half the city in it, but, but it's an old Xerox copy. So. Anyway, I just wanna make that clarification.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Uh, I haven't jumped in here really. I wasn't a fan of the process either, but where we're at right now, it's supposed to be done from the snatch, uh, snapshot in time. It's not supposed to do, be with future growth. It's supposed to be from this, what is this right now? Cause to be honest, we haven't been real friendly with growth. And then we're kinda known for not being friendly with growth. And we've proven that up here with our votes. So trying to look to future growth shouldn't be a criteria at all. Yeah, there's space available if we approve it. And that's gonna be a rotating thing all the time with council members coming and going. If these numbers hit, I don't, I don't see what the deal is. And even if Matt lives over there, I, I wouldn't mind blaming a guy for wanting to keep in the ward that he's in, the ward he represents. There's nothing wrong with that. We got it right now. We're, it all balances out. And I have twenty-one hundred new voters.
And you need them.
If I was gonna run for reelection, that might be a thing.
Councilmember Holman.
I would, uh, I'd agree that future, apparently as according to the city attorney, future population growth isn't really a factor. But I would note that according to the census, Norman had the third highest total population growth in the state of Oklahoma. It grew by almost twenty thousand people. That was more than double the population growth of Moore, which only had seven thousand. So we grew by more than double. We grew by more than an entire city council ward in the last ten years. We grew by enough to add a whole new ward, just to make that clear. Tulsa grew by twenty-two thousand. We grew by almost as much total population as the city of Tulsa, which has over four hundred thousand people. So, you know, I, I hear that we've been anti-growth or we're not, you know, we're not, uh, easy to do business with, but if you drive around Norman, there is construction absolutely everywhere. There are so many houses being built in Ward seven. I can't keep up with the number of new residents I'm getting. And that's reflected here, how my ward is the only ward not gaining any people. It's the only one losing. I'm losing two thousand people because the houses in Ward seven are being built so fast. And the growth, you know, in my area is projected to grow significantly. So I just wanna, you know, put that out there that we do have this reputation about what some people think about Norman, but the reality is, we are growing more than Edmund, Moore, Broken Arrow, Lawton. Lawton's losing people. Uh, and Tulsa's just barely ahead of us. Oklahoma City made up almost fifty percent of all the population growth in the whole state. So nobody's on their level. They are blowing everybody away. So just wanted to put that out there. That growth the next ten years is a real thing to think about, even if it's not technically a criteria that we should consider here.
All right, Councilwoman Tortorello, you made the motion to amend. Is this the version you would like to put forward as the said amended version?
Yes.
Are there any other comments from council regarding this motion to amend with the version you see in front of you? None? Oh, go ahead.
It's approved tonight. Could we get a map of this like, very quickly?
Like tonight?
Maybe.
No.
No. Early in the morning, please Brenda. Okay.
Fair question. Um, the motion on the floor is to adopt a resolution amending the boundaries recommended, oops, sorry, uh, resolution amending the boundaries as amended, as in front of you. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All right, now I asked. She said no.
Just to be on the safe side, even though we just had a public hearing, we, this is an amendment. So I would like to open it back up to public comment regarding the amended version. Any public comment? Come on up. Let's go. Michael Blunk.
Remembering now, I've been up here enough. All right. Uh, so, uh, I got a couple of quick comments. I was gonna make this quick for our three minutes. Uh, one thing that really kinda does irk me, we, we're gonna go back to comments made by, uh, by my council member, uh, a little while ago. Uh, this seems very odd for this process. I just wanna make it very clear, I've been in this council chamber several times in the last two years, and I've heard over and over again our hesitancy to make policy from the diocese. And here I just watched elected officials carve up their own town in front of us in real time. And while I know that we, we did have, you know, the, the, the vote of the people to make sure this is a, in a process that could be, could be part of the things, to have our elected officials have a part in, in the redistricting process. I'll be honest, it feels super sketch. Like the idea that, that, you know, we had things go to committee, the idea we had, you know, non, our non-elected officials, people who weren't our council members have this discussion, right? We had them have discussion, layout maps that worked originally, right? Uh, and then we have this process where once again, we fiddle with it in real time and like, what, like an hour and a half? And now we're like, this is, I don't know. It does, it does not feel very democratic. It feels kind of awkward. We saw that obviously you guys worked very closely together. You know, we're all of each other live for the most part, which makes it even more awkward, which was pointed out by Brandy Stoudtley, uh, for, you know, no offense against Mr. Becock, but I mean, that's just, that's, that's the reason that we chose to take this original process away from the city council for the original proposal. I'll, I'll just be honest. I, I understand the legitimate grievances from folks over in Ward six and, and, and five, but if we're talking about trying to make sure that everyone from that committee was satisfied, well, we, we have like the other half of that committee isn't here either, right? So just because we had a handful of folks from that committee here, doesn't mean that this process was any fairer. The whole thing seems like a giant mess and the small tweaking we've done, I don't think it makes much of a difference from the original suggestion, except now that, you know, we have this section of Ward, of Ward eight that is now still where it is. Point is, it all sounded pretty messy, but the point is, this thing was just, it was a train wreck to watch. Uh, I don't know. I just, I was pretty disappointed by the whole process. And yeah, that's, I mean, more than my thoughts are a little more consolidated than that, but guys, what just happened? So, there you go.
Thank you.
I'd like to also make a quick comment. Uh, I've also been.
Mr. Wagner, correct? Introduce yourself, please.
Mark Wagner, Ward five. Uh, I have also been in these chambers, uh, many times in the last couple of years. I hadn't been before that and just a lot of issues have come up. And I have to say that this is the first time that I've seen a city council actually respond to any comments from the people that, the citizens that come here before the council. Not just for Ward five and not just, not any other ward. I've seen all sorts of different, uh, arguments, complaints, whatever, and it seems like every time council goes back and votes pretty much how we expected them to vote before any comments were heard. And so I have to applaud this council that it seems that you've at least taken, uh, to heart the comments of citizens who are legitimately concerned and have made adjustments and have acted in accordingly. So I, I do appreciate that. And so credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Goodchild, Ward five. Um, I would like to replicate that and say, I really appreciate you listening to your constituents, particularly those in Ward five and Ward six. Uh, those were the two. This plan that was sent to you was not a unanimous plan. Um, I had kept asking for some different boundaries on Ward five. And I appreciate the council looking at that. Um, I just wanted you to know that it was not unanimously sent to you. And I concur with Ward two that when things happen and you don't feel listened to, it makes you feel very upset. But as they told me, everybody has to give and take a little bit. And I, I'm, I feel more comfortable with this plan than I did the one we sent to you. And I appreciate all of you listening to us.
Thank you.
Rich Luebers, Ward seven. Uh, today, right now, we just spent an hour and a half and we accomplished the exact same thing that the committee handed to you, um, uh, that, that we're all meeting about today. So in an hour and a half, we, uh, got to the exact same level of balance as the committee sent to you. I was the Ward seven representative on this committee and I was happy to do so. And we spent some time, uh, moving some stuff around. Some of the issues that were, that were brought out in the public were, uh, related to gerrymandering. Um, I, I, I would argue that if we look at the maps, uh, as presented to you from the committee compared to this one right here, um, that, that should and could still be a concern, uh, for the public. I would also like to point out to you that we moved two squares, uh, from Ward six into Ward eight and three, uh, from Ward six into Ward five from the, the proposed map that came from the committee. Um, and some of the concerns from our Ward five friends were that, uh, we moved eleven miles of farmland into Ward six that, that, you know, does not, you know, whatever. Uh, and that, that we've now moved three of those, uh, miles back into Ward five. Uh, which would suggest that those concerns, uh, could and should still be valid, um, from our friends, uh, because now we're sure we're not moving eleven miles. We're just moving eight. moving 11 miles, we're just moving eight, which is still a concern, one would think. The real question here is, where did we end up as folks who just spent an hour and a half of everyone's time recognizing that we are in the exact same spot that we were compared to what we sent forward? Sure, some of the lines are a little bit different, and that's okay. But at the end of the day, this was, this was about something different, and it was, and it was about something, something else. And, yeah, I guess I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Alex Torrey, Ward Six. I think this is a lot better than what the reapportionment committee submitted to you guys. It's not perfect. There are some other things I'd like to see changed. That's why I think it should go back to committee or a new committee be reappointed, but this is much better than what it was to start with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comment, any final comment from council? Councilmember Tortorello? That might still be there. Is that, you good?
I appreciate the council looking at this, and, you know, we are following the charter as it's written. The reapportionment committee submitted the plans to us, and we looked at it, and it was well within our rights to make the modifications. And I think we did a great job tonight. Again, I don't think we would have been here if it wasn't for the hyper-partisan remarks made and brought to my attention. But at the end of the day, I think we worked well together, and everyone agrees that the numbers do match, the parameters for the deviation are within the appropriate numbers. And this is the function of governments, you know? If it's within the charter, and we have that right to look at what was submitted to us, we did that tonight. So, you know, it's, it's part of the democratic process, and, and going forward, you know, you know, I think we all did a good job. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Just briefly, I just wanna thank everybody that's been involved in this process, but I specifically wanna thank Rich Lubbers, who I appointed to this committee because I know him, I believe strongly that he is a person of integrity, and I just thank you for giving your time and willingness to serve our ward in this capacity. Thank you.
Councilmember Studley.
I have a lot to say. I'm trying to figure out my words. I do agree with what Rich was saying, that I feel like this had way more to do with just some personal issues rather than what it did have to do with ward boundaries and gerrymandering. And I think if you do wanna talk about gerrymandering, what we did right now was gerrymandering, in my opinion, because we're looking at where people live versus the straight lines and full-on numbers and things like that. Taking three miles back into Ward Five absolutely did nothing, honestly, for what you guys were here talking about and what your concerns were. I really, wholeheartedly do not believe that, in those meetings, the comment that Larla made had anything to do with how these numbers were drawn. In fact, Larla wasn't even at the first meeting. She was at the second meeting, and didn't make a comment at all until about midway through. And it was purely because of what your Ward Five representative kept saying, she wants to keep like people with like people, and didn't want Ward Five developed. Whenever Councilmember Tortorello has talked several times about being in favor of development, and saying that he's, he's not in favor of telling what a man... And so, with that, I think that it was very personal and did not have anything to do with gerrymandering. And what Larla said was that he's dangerous based off of some actions that he has made in the past prior to the election, and that's, you know, if Larla feels that Councilmember Tortorello is dangerous, then that's her opinion. And maybe that appointment committee was not the right place to state that opinion, but it had absolutely nothing to do with how these ward boundaries were drawn. I'm glad that we got the time to kinda look at this and move some things around and see that there, it could be manipulated slightly, but it did not get manipulated to the way that you, Ms. Goodchild, had wanted, because you were looking at Cedar Lane, and those houses had nothing to do with what we just moved. So I don't see how you could be happy with the changes that were made, because it really didn't affect the farm area in Ward Five, which is what you guys are really concerned about. I also wanna make a point that just because you're splitting up agricultural areas, to me, it would seem that you would have more representation on council. Because as you've seen from your own Ward Five representative, he's going to vote for development if that's what is in the best interest of that person who owns that property, which has nothing to do with agriculture land that we saw in the Eagle Cliff as he brought up before himself. And he voted for the development of Eagle Cliff to cut into and kind of ruin and harm some possible farmland in the future. But that's what you guys are dealing with, that's what you guys have brought before us with your complaints, and we at least did move it, but I, I am personally not happy with the results. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I have a lot of feelings about how this went down tonight, and the process that transpired, I guess I should say. I don't think that it's necessarily, you know, a bad thing to work through the process and, you know, look at what has been done, and kind of illuminate and, you know, bring to light what this process looked like for the, the committee. But I don't know that this was the right course of action for us to take tonight. As has been said before me, this map that we've got right here in front of us is honestly not that different than what was proposed from our commission. And so I don't know how those concerns of our Ward Six and our Ward Five residents are really being addressed by this, frankly. So, to me, this is not really about the numbers. This has been about the process, and what we did, and the precedent that we potentially are setting by bringing a nonpartisan, citizen-run commission that we have set aside outside of city council's hands to do the work of doing reapportionment every 10 years to look at our ward boundaries, right? This should be outside of our hands on city council. That is something that I firmly believe, and tonight, that's not what happened. I think that it's dangerous for us to sit up here as elected officials and draw boundaries based on the things that we know. We know where we live. We know our districts. We know our wards very well. We know, yeah, we know our voters. We understand things differently than, you know, citizens that are given information from our staff members. And I would just caution that what we did tonight is potentially precedent-setting down the road for future city councils, for future commissions. And I'm concerned about the process that we took tonight. I don't necessarily have much to say about this final map. I mean, it's fine. I thought, like I said, it's not much different than the one that was brought to us by the commission. And so I don't really know what to do with that, frankly. I think that we, this was motivated by something a lot different than just changing some slight ward boundaries in Five and Six. And I think that it was motivated to, to change some bigger conversations and to allow this council to do what it did tonight by moving boundaries to set that precedent moving forward. And that is something that I think we shouldn't have done. So, I will just leave it at that. I think, yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
So I'm just gonna shoot from the hip, and I, everything about tonight sucked. I don't like the feeling that I feel right now. Every single one of us on this dais is ticked off. I know Councilmember Tortorello and I were very concerned about our boundaries. I think that was our biggest concern. Trying to respect the feelings, I know that we couldn't give Ward Five everything, but I think they can at least appreciate that we tried. And I think everyone saw that the process is very difficult. We tried to manipulate things in a lot of ways, and it's very hard to do. We do have, we have the planning commission. They, they're experts. They review things, they present stuff to us, and we don't have to accept it. We can come up here and we can make an amendment to things. So I think us moving bound wards is within the realm of what we can do. Do I feel great about how it all happened and transpired? Absolutely not. I will vote for this. If it passes, if it fails, I don't know. We'll just do whatever it is that we have to do to move forward. But I think, hopefully, at the very least, the public saw that this is not, we're just sitting here trying to move lines to do what... It's very difficult, and it's very frustrating. And Joyce, thank you so much for all of your clicking and dealing with us. You were kind of, you know, getting it from us, and I apologize. But city council is not an easy job, and I'm a parent. This is way harder than raising a child. So, 'cause, you know, your child eventually has to go to bed. So I apologize for council's behavior tonight. I do think that we were all a little brash. Maybe people don't want me to apologize on their behalf, but I feel like that's appropriate to do. I don't know. We tried, if it gets shot down, we'll, we'll try again. I don't know, if we have to start from scratch, whatever the appropriate thing we have to do, then I'm open to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Well, first of all, I would just like to thank Ms. Goodchild, Mr. Lubbers, is that right? Lubbers? Okay, I wanna get your name right. Thank you. And Mr. Zorba, for sticking it out and getting to witness what you all went through. And I appreciate the diversity of thought that was in the commission. And I also wanna thank publicly the rest of the representatives from every ward that served on the commission, including the Ward Four Representative Kay Holiday. And I think, I don't really have very much to add, except for the fact that there is a reason that we turned over the responsibility of taking a serious look at reapportionment to a committee that is not made up of elected officials.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peacock.
Yeah, so I feel like I gotta defend myself here a little bit. First off, obviously, this has been known for months, or since this recommendation came out, and I have yet to make a stink or a complaint about this. I was fully willing to approve the map as it was, with me drawing out of Ward Eight. So, I only made the suggestion to make the numbers work. I mean, I, just restoring what was there and not cannibalizing another ward. You can tell I'm flustered, but there absolutely was zero malicious intent there. It was just a ready-made solution that worked. The fact that I'm getting accused of something more sinister, really, it hits hard, and it hits hard in a bad way. I think you guys probably know me, and know my character, and know that I wouldn't do anything to undermine this process or jeopardize that reputation. So, I just wanna make it clear that it was simply restoring what was already there and nothing more.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lynn.
I feel like I don't have anything to apologize for. This was voter-approved. This is the process. This was mandated by the voters of Norman. This is what we are supposed to do, and this is what we've been given a mandate to do. If you don't like how it worked out, there's always a charter change. It might seem awkward that council members are doing their thing, but this is what was voter-approved. I have nothing to apologize about that for. I'm happy to let's rock and roll and get something done. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Studley.
Councilmember Peacock, I am not accusing you personally. I'm just saying that that's the appearance that it gives. I 100% trust and believe in your morals and your ethics, and I know that you always do the right things for the right reasons. So, I just wanna put that out there. This is nothing personal against you. It's just purely of how it looks on this map, that one little part coming back in, just looks a little off to me. And again, I know it's not anything you're personally doing, I'm just saying that it just looks funny, and I feel like if we're being accused of gerrymandering because of 11 square miles being moved into Ward Six from Ward Five, and we only moved three back, now what, now what are people going to say, even more so that we've put you back in your own ward? So that's, it has nothing to do with you, it's just the perception, so...
Thank you. So, I cannot support these changes tonight based on the fact that, yes, we can do it, but should we do it? I don't know if you've been following the accusations of gerrymandering at the state Capitol, and it looks like we're doing the exact same thing. We are picking our voters. And I agree with the comments of how we, we have a process to take the, a very political thing and put it in the hands of residents. And as you heard, I don't pick the committee members. They all came from the representatives, and of course, newer councilmembers did not have a say in who was appointed. And then it was approved by the council! But I, I can't support this for a variety of reasons. I know that we have voted against recommendations from boards and commissions before, but this is a once-in-a-decade commission with a very special purpose. So I appreciate everyone's efforts. I loved, rash or not, the working together that happened, and hashing things out. I think it was a good night for the council, but I can't, I mean, if it was, if it was political before, it's really political now. And this is something that belongs to the people regardless, I believe, of what the charter says because of what it means for decades. So, with that, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Okay, all votes, if the motion fails, by a vote of four to five, voting in favor, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Foreman, Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Lynn.
Okay. I believe that brings us back to the recommendation as presented.
Well, yeah, your motion's on the floor. What's to ma... I mean, he didn't...
Motion. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, if we approve, whatever map we approve, if we approve it tonight, then there's, we have the first and second reading. On that second reading, the council could choose at that time, based on public feedback, to say, "Ah, after thinking about it, we don't wanna do this map." And could start, what would happen? We start over again? We, committee goes back, or...
If it's silent on that issue, it could be council just continuing to work on it. You could opt to send it back to the reapportionment committee.
Okay. So there is further opportunity for the public to look at what we send forward and participate in that second hearing at least, or second reading, give feedback, and then the council make another final decision, perhaps.
Correct.
Okay, and as we clarified earlier, that if it doesn't pass on the second reading, we're not breaking any sort of deadline. There's no pressing deadline from the state or federal government.
Yeah, that has to be done within a reasonable amount of time, I believe, as the language used in state statute.
Yeah, I had, I thought I had remembered that there was some, maybe it's not for city council wards, but that there was a deadline for the publishing of the census data. Maybe it was six months or a year to when boundaries had to be finalized, but you're saying that's not...
It's six months from, for the committee to get their work done.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be finalized within a time period after the census? Okay.
Councilwoman Foreman, point of clarification?
Yes, what if it fails tonight? What was the option? I've heard so many things tonight.
Then we need to go back to the drawing board tonight if we wanna follow the charter's deadline, which says you have to act on a resolution within 30 days of the ad hoc committee's recommendation.
So without saying it, we need to approve it, just so...
So, without saying it, we need to approve it just so we can move forward.
Need to approve something.
Oh, God. Okay. Yes. Great point of clarification. That is the deadline that we're under.
A resolution tonight.
A resolution tonight based on the final recommendation from the reapportionment commission is the only deadline we are under. Who drafted this charter amendment? Okay, all right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommended ward boundaries that was presented by the reapportionment commission. Are there any questions from council regarding this motion? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this motion.
If I could, Karen Goodchild, since I was mentioned, I never said some of the things I'm accused of. I said this was a community of interest because we are all zone dag. I never said I was happy with this map. I said it was better, and I appreciate the council listening to constituents. I am not happy with this map. It's better. I would like to see... And the council did not want to move a lot of things. I would like to see the more southern part go into seven or one. I would like to see the wrapping around Brookhaven, I'll put that in quotes, because that was in the minutes for Ward Three into Ward Eight. So, to say I'm happy, I just think it's better, and I appreciate the council listening to constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Hacklum with Ward Five. Tonight's exercise, I think, is self-evident of what we've been suggesting during the last public hearing and in this session as well. This needs to go back to the committee, plain and simple. As a member of the Charter Review Commission, we met multiple times on key topics that are important to the lifeblood of Norman and its constitution. And there was a lot of give and take. There was a lot of debate. Ultimately, we came up with some decisions. This was a two-meeting process, not counting the vote, making big decisions about the boundaries of the individual wards. And even tonight, the council was ready to start altering those lines. Thank you for willing... Your willingness to do that. But that's not your responsibility. That is the responsibility of the committee. Your job is to send this back to the committee. That's my... I mean, I think you all really understand that. And, yeah, there were a lot of issues from the representative for Ward One, who should have recused herself from the vote, and all of the other issues that went along. But tonight is self-evident. The committee needs to go back to work, start the job again, and then let's take another look at it. Expediency is not your friend. Expediency is not going to help the city of Norman. Let's do it right.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Blunk?
Michael Blunk, Ward Two. In general, I know since we're now... As I understand, we're currently now back to the map that was originally proposed by the committee. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In general, I, like I mentioned at the start of the meeting this evening, I am okay with that being passed personally. If the council does decide that it should go back to committee, that honestly, to be honest, at this point, feels maybe not a bad call, if it comes to that. The big issue we ran into, at least for me, the big issue we ran into was the fact that the moment that, yes, while it is within the power of the council to redraw lines if necessary, right? I mean, that's part of the charter. We talked about that earlier this evening. Obviously, though, as we've mentioned, it kind of raised the temperature quite a bit, right? So, honestly, I kind of agree with the notion that if we have to, going back to a committee, especially if there's no hard deadline, right? It's not like the city budget, you know, we're not going to get sued if we go back to the drawing board, right? So, if that's the case, then potentially that might be what we have to do ultimately. I, again, if we do vote for this particular map, I'm fine. But obviously, though, I'm not from the same wards that everyone else who had issues. So, my biggest concern was just having our elected officials having such an impact on their own, like, districts. And again, not to accuse anybody of any foul play. But that's the... But the point being, though, that any time you have elected officials in that process, it raises the specter of that. It also... It also just looks really messy, right? Like, we talked about, again, not wanting to be crafting policy on the fly on the daisies. This feels like something that just kind of illustrates that same issue before. So, I guess in closing, I am okay with this one being passed, but if we go back to committee, that might be the more community-centric approach at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Wagner, Ward Five.
I have to agree with the previous speakers that I believe this should go back to committee because this has obviously become political. We just demonstrated in the last hour and a half that council, for all... Everyone saying how difficult a process this is, council got the numbers to work out in an hour and a half. And so, a group of people that have no idea of where anybody lives or any of those other political issues should be able to make the numbers work very, very quickly. This should not be a huge, big job. And I said that in my first comments. This is not rocket surgery. This is a matter of just making numbers work out. So, I think the appropriate thing right now with all the politicization, all of the comments that were made, back and forth, it just needs to go back to committee and let's get the numbers to work out and get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Lynn?
I'd like to make a motion, send it back to committee.
We have to pass a deadline, I believe, because it came out of the 30 days. So, my understanding is we have to pass this tonight but can fail it later?
Yeah. This language needs some changing, doesn't it? So, the options are to adopt the resolution that the committee has sent to you without modification, reject it or adopt it with modification as it seems necessary. Another option maybe would be to reject the resolution, ask the committee to go back and bring forward another recommendation.
So, that's an option.
That could be an option.
I second that motion.
I second that most. Mark, go ahead. So, can you... For clarification?
I'd like to clarify my motion to reject and send it to committee.
I second.
Okay. Just for Roberts' rules, it's not an amendment that's on the floor. It's a motion to adopt. So, if you want to make a motion to reject, you got to deal with the motion on the floor first to adopt. You need to vote it down or whatever you need to do.
Can the motioner withdraw the motion?
No. It belongs to the body now.
Got it.
Because it's been motioned and seconded. So, we need to vote on what's on the floor. And if that fails, then you can come back and make a motion to reject. It's not like an amendment. It's a whole different motion.
Okay. Then I will call the question on the motion to adopt, so we can go ahead and vote on that one. Anyone arguing with that? All right.
The motion to adopt as recommended passes via a vote of five...
Well, that was unexpected.
Voting against, councilmember Peacock, councilmember Foreman, councilmember Tortorello, councilmember Lynn.
That's it.
So, you are done.
Ms. Walker, I'm sure there will be plenty of emails coming your way about the next steps. Okay. This meeting is adjourned.